flowers in the cabinet, I didn't get a chance like really even have a hard time mailing you a thank you card.
Ah, don't worry about that.
They were beautiful. They were beautiful. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
All right, you ready? We're ready when you are, guys.
Yeah, I'm just going to open up the meeting and turn it over to our chairman of the Finance and Operations Committee. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January or January. Sorry, everyone. I'm getting ahead of myself.
December 8.
December 8th work session. We have four committees tonight. Our first meeting is Finance and Operations. I will turn it over to our chairperson, Ms. Paulette Woods. Paulette, the floor is yours. You're on mute, Paulette.
Emma, okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Good evening, board members, staff members, and community. A welcome to the Finance and Operations work session. We have some great updates and progress reports on two very important areas. One is our WBE, MBE, where we have opportunities to improve the lives of our students, to improve our lives of our students, our parents, and our community. We made a lot of progress on making sure that all taxpayers in every county have the opportunity to do business with Buffalo Public Schools and to attempt to create diversity in our vendors. This is important because our students, when they graduate, want and need jobs. And by extending opportunities to all members of our community, we create economic development and businesses and provide employment opportunities for our students. So I want to thank Ramona Williams and Dr. Cash for the additional outreach you've been doing for these months in this area. The second report is going to be on the ARP, American Rescue Act Funds, which is a great opportunity in a long time to remake our educational system. I got $280 million to model, expand, and provide additional educational resources to our children and to address learning loss during the last two years of COVID. Dr. Cash will present and let you know how we're going to expand remote learning, our technology, more socioeconomic supports to our students, and also to build bridges and partner with our community. So with that said, it's an exciting time, and I give it over to you, Dr. Cash, to turn the mic to you and your excellent staff.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Woods. Appreciate the introduction. Colleagues, this is a presentation that I think you will find illuminating. Jeffrey Pritchard, our CFO, and I will share some of the slides. CFO Pritchard will have the lead on most of these. We'll start with three slides regarding the MWBE efforts that we are making, the policy that you have as a board. Certainly, there's a law at the state level that supports this work. But I thought it would be important for this presentation to start off with some data about MBWEs and really get a good handle on what that data is, both for the city of Buffalo, the county of Erie County, and the state of New York. And Jeff and his team have done some deep digging on how many of those entities exist and are available to do business with us, but with some caveats. So we think this will be a good educative work session. I encourage you all to tune in, and after just a few slides, we will be able to have discussion. I recommend tonight, colleagues, that we have the first three slides and then discuss MWBE, and then we go to the five slides related to ARP funds monitoring and budget timelines. Somebody has their mic on, and we're hearing a lot of feedback. So colleagues, if you could make sure your mics are muted while we have the presentation and the discussion, unless you are speaking. All right. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Pritchard, let's lead off with our MWBE population. What is the data? What does it look like? What's the population of this of this work? Mr. Pritchard.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, board members. As Dr. Cash mentioned, there are there's quite a few slides in my presentation tonight, actually the first three being MWBE, so we'll try to get through those as quick as we can for questions. Admir, can you please go to the next slide, page number two? So back in March, we had given a presentation on some of the initial data gathering relative to MWBE. And that presentation is still posted on the finance webpage, so it's March 3. But one of the things we wanted to do here, because I think it was helpful for us as we started to look at the data, to actually compare, you know, the the number of minority and women-owned businesses that we have in our vendor system versus the the lists that are in New York State in the county, which are who we measure our MWBE performance against. And, you know, we had looked at it sort of in numeric terms before, but I thought it was helpful to turn these into some charts. So there's actually two charts on this page. And I'll go over the one on the left first. So the one on the left has it's got three groupings of vendor counts. So the leftmost is MBE, so minority-owned business. The one in the middle is is WBE, women-owned business. And then the one on the right is actually a sum of the two. Now, I have a little note at the very top of this chart that I think I may have probably double-counted some, because there are some businesses that would fall under minority and women-owned. And in this case, I'm actually, I believe, adding them up here, but I didn't have the data to fully disaggregate. And and again, this this chart is really just to kind of show just sort of a population, the populations that exist in in the county and in New York State. And there's actually, if you go all the way to the right, you'll see the MWBE. So that's sort of the combination of both. The green bar is BPS. That's that's us. So we have a little over 100 MWBE vendors in our system. We're in process right now of actually being able to separate those into minority and then women-owned, but at this point, I don't have that, and I didn't want to guess at how they are. So I'm only showing it in this total section here of MWBE. So there's approximately 100. And the other data on the county and the state is actually from the March presentation, so I haven't had a chance to update that yet. But the orange, the orange bar, that is the county. Next to that, you'll see the gray, and that is the county MWBE listing, to the extent that they that the businesses are housed in Buffalo. The largest of the bars in here is actually the state MWBE. And you'll see that whether it be minority-owned, women-owned, or the combination, both, that that kind of yellowy-orange is the highest. So there's approximately 700 vendors. At that time, there were 700 MWBE vendors in New York State. And then next to that is the blue, our New York State certified vendors that are in the city of Buffalo. It's 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 quite possible, in fact, I'm certain of it, that there are, you know, some of these vendors, they're they're in multiple groups. So a vendor might be on the state listing in Buffalo. They also might be on the county listing in Buffalo. So one vendor could actually show up in each each of those charts, and they also might be one of our vendors. So if you and if you look at it, we've got about 100 that are certified in our system at this point. Approximately 200 are certified by the county, 700 by the state. So our our the the number that we do business with is a it's a measurable and meaningful number of the MWBEs that that exist that are certified in the state. Obviously, not everyone can do business with us. And the data that we have itself, you know, we may be missing some. We believe we probably are. So that's just a kind of a quick recap of those totals. The chart on the right is what I wanted to look at next, and that really, just to try and get an understanding of the scale and scope of our overall vendor system. So the leftmost bar there is the Buffalo Public Schools vendor population. We have approximately 9,000 active vendors in our system. I don't know the numbers that I don't know the number of vendors that the state has or the county, but when you look at ours, it's approximately 9,000. I suspect the county and the state both are significantly larger than ours. That's how many folks we do business with, and that goes from the largest to the smallest. Not every vendor we do business with every day, some intermittently, some very small amounts. There are some large ones in there, but the total number of vendors is around 9,000. At the very, very bottom of that of that chart, in green, you will see that's that 100 or so that are the MWBE vendors. So right now, if you look at our vendor population that that BPS uses, a very, very small portion of our vendors are minority and women-owned businesses that are certified by the state or the county. And then next or above that, you'll see kind of with a dotted line, if we were to have as every one of the state vendor, state-certified minority and women-owned vendors, if every one of those were in our vendor system, it would still be less than 1,000. It would be around 700. But then again, compare that to the overall population. So the the point here really is that there is a lot of work to be done, and we play a part of this. And I think we've done some good work over the last couple of weeks with some of that outreach of trying to, you know, start small, but start start finding, identifying different folks. We need to start getting them certified as well. But it's it's important to just understand that right now, and even if you took every single potential MWBE business in New York State that's on the certified state list, they would still be just a very, very small portion of our overall of our overall vendor population. And and what we have found is that minority and women-owned businesses tend to be a bit on the smaller side relative to some of the larger vendors that we have. You know, we have some big vendors that we that we make purchases from, that, you know, publicly traded companies and things like that, and health insurers and so forth, that, you know, there's a lot of dollars there. But there's there's certainly a lot of work to be done. But I think it's, again, it's important just to show the the scale that we're that we're working with. And this, again, is all data that we've looked at before, but we didn't look at it sort of in a graph, and I think sometimes it's helpful when we see these things in in a graph. Now, I wanted to go, if we can, Admir, if we can please go to the next page. Included in the Board Docs agenda is a document, and that document, I'll kind of show it, you probably can't see it in my hands here, but it's a two it's a two-sided document that actually lists so far what we've been able to compile. So we had the Director of Purchase, over the last, really, almost two years, come up with a system of of taking the, you know, going through our policy, going through the eligible spend that we have, which essentially correlates to what we bring to the board. So our MWBE policy for most spending starts at $25,000. We bring items to the board, bids or otherwise, at $20,000. So they correlate very closely. So we're actually using data in in Board Docs to create what will ultimately be a quarterly report that we would share with the board that shows the actual tracking on a on an annual basis, a historical basis, in terms of minority and women-owned businesses. This is just a start, and there's going to be a lot more as we begin to disaggregate things even more. It was a little surprising to me how how much how much effort we put into being able to track this data. I'm I'm big on data and and numbers and things like that, obviously, given given my role here. And I've I've generally found that it's when we start looking at the data, that's when we start to ask the good questions, that's when we start to figure out how to improve processes, and that's when we when we will start to see things take off. This data here is is just a snippet of that handout that is in in the two-page handout that's in Board Docs. So you have the presentation, and then you have the award data. So this document here, or what you see here, is an accumulation for the 2021 fiscal year of all the awards that went through the board, and there were 321 of them. So I'm kind of on the left-hand side of that of that table there. There were 321 awards. Next to that, you will see that there were 13 of the items that went to the board. There were 13 that were fully compliant with our MWBE policy. And the MWBE policy essentially is that 25% of the award would go to a minority or women-owned business, as you'll see 13. So of all the awards, a very small number are are compliant with the policy at this time. That's based on the data from last year. Now, this data, again, 2020, 21, and 22 so far, it's a little bit different. You know, we've got we've been in COVID, we've we've had less activity, less less bidding. Things are different than they were a couple of years ago, but it's still it's it's, you know, a little less than two years' worth of data that we that we have. And, you know, that's that's where it is now. So again, you can see in the data on the left, the number of awards, the number of compliant awards, then the number of minority business dollar awards, the women business entity dollar awards, and then of the total dollar awards. So that's that is of all, there's a large accumulation of all the all the bid items that we've brought to the board, where we keep them in in a master document that actually then populates this, you know, this summary sheet. I'm going to take you over to the right-hand side of of this little chart, where you will see fiscal year 2022 through the first quarter. Highlighted in yellow, you'll see fiscal year 2021, and then fiscal year 2020, and then a total. And that's where you're going to see, I guess, at this point, the the summary of, based on this data, where we are in terms of tracking to our minority and women-owned business goals. So I'm going to just kind of run down these numbers quickly with you. And and again, this is a this is a document that, when we put it together, I spent hours and hours and hours talking with the Director of Purchase, going back and forth, what does this mean? What does that mean? It's the type of thing you have to look at a while. So I I fully expect that in the days ahead, I'm going to receive some phone calls with people saying, can you please explain this better? I want to understand that. So I, you know, I don't I don't want to get ahead of myself, thinking that this will be fully followable to everybody, because it's something that I have to look at all the time as well. But in each one of these years, I've got a compliant ratio at the top, and you'll see that over the three years that are in this, about 5.19%. So about 5% of our awards have been compliant with our policy, meaning at least 25% of the award went to a minority or women-owned business. Immediately below that, you will see the award dollar for minority minority business as a percent of the total award, and that is actually 0.37% in total over those over those three years. Below that is the women-owned business, and that adds up to over those three years. And again, I'm just going over the total column, 4.22%. And then together, the MWBE award as a ratio of total awards, about 4.59%. Our policy is asking for 25% in total. We're at, over this period of time, 4.59%. So it's much less than the whole or much less than the than than the policy limit. It's actually, when I look at it and I compare it to the number of vendors we have, I'm actually a little bit heartened, thinking that there's, one, there's room to grow, and two, because of the sheer number of vendors that are not certified, the fact that there are many that are, shows that we have that we have achieved some here, some level of success in this. Most of it, though, you will see, is in the women-owned businesses, not in the minority. So that is, you know, that's that's that little snippet of data, because that's really, you know, this is, at this point, based on, you know, based on the data that we pull out of our Board Docs, this is something that, on a quarterly basis, we intend to continue to update, and and we'll have all this data tracked over over multiple years. It's it there are absolutely limitations here. You know, a couple of things, one thing that are obvious, there is minority and women-owned businesses that are are that we spend with at at low levels, small dollars, that wouldn't cross over the policy threshold. Those aren't reflected on here. We know that there are minority and women-owned businesses that are not certified. They're not reflected on here. We don't, at this time, have the subcontractors included. There are there are times when a vendor has known subcontractors that are minority-owned, minority and women-owned businesses, and we do not have that in here yet. Out of state, you know, a lot of our vendors are out of state. Our policy does not recognize out-of-state certifications for minority and women-owned businesses. Those would not be represented in here as well. You know, and there's also many businesses that are not eligible, so not-for-profit organizations, even like church groups, things like that. I don't believe they can be certified as MWBEs because of their not-for-profit status. So that, you know, that that's really the the data. In in that handout, or the other, you know, where I pulled this from, on that page, there's actually three different sections. So this includes all awards that went through the board, including awards that were subject to a bid or RFP or quote plus, awards that might have been that did not. So those could be renewals, sole source, preferred sources, things like that. So to the extent that there is not competition in our solicitations, we're not opening them up to minority-owned businesses. And that's, you know, that's that's just a function of, you know, there are many different procurement methods that are out there. We we try to stress the the RFP and bid as being the most wide wide-ranging in terms of, you know, opening it up to as many folks as possible, because that will allow us to help help, you know, basically help out and identify and get get bids and quotes and so forth from minority and women-owned businesses. So that that data there kind of summarizes where, you know, where we are with with the, both in terms of dollar awards and in terms of just the the compliant ratio, meaning just the number of awards that we make that were compliant with the policy itself. So we are a long way away from 25%, but certainly, I think that things that we've done over the last little while, one, in terms of being able to start seeing where we are, and in terms of this outreach, I think has gone, will has and will go along, you know, a long way. We have also talked to vendors, again, and asked them to be certified. I've actually, on a couple of occasions, I've I've filled out a letter and sent it to the state, because because there's things like that that we can do too, to help help vendors that we work with get through that certification process quicker, because not everybody wants to do it. It can be time-consuming, but obviously, it it's it helps a wider goal. I'm going to go to the next page, if we can now. And Dr. Cash, this may be, I don't know if you wanted to kind of jump in here for a minute to to lead us off here?
Yeah, Jeff, this slide I agreed is mine. I don't know why you limited me to a minute. Maybe you're trying to give me a hint there. But you did a good job, Jeff, and I do, colleagues, want you to really focus in on that data, because while you have, I think, a good aspirational policy in your 5414, five-page policy there related to this matter, and whereas New York State law, executive law, Article 15A summarizes much of the same kind of language that you have in your 5414 policy, 15A also offers outreach support to minority and women-owned businesses through the division of minority and women-owned businesses in the state. So that's good. All that foundation is good. But but what you do have to notice is that the number of certified minority and women-owned businesses is very, very small relative to the total number of vendors that there are doing business in New York State, and then, of course, by deduction, doing business here in the Buffalo Public Schools. 9,000 to just over 100, 107, to be exact, that Jeff is mentioning. So we have 107 certified minority-owned businesses doing businesses with the Buffalo Public School, who has over 9,000 vendors that we are doing business. That's the picture. That's the picture. And so Jeff is right. I think the goal right now is aspirational. It's not real realistic right now for it to work, but where we can make some headway, I believe, is to start to unpack what our top commodity buys and spends are, and what our top services that we need for the Buffalo to run the Buffalo Public Schools are. And that's the space that then we do outreach, and we do training, and we do data tracking to try to get more minority vendors in the game, so to speak, if you will, particularly minority, as in people of color, women of color, males of color, males of different cultural backgrounds, and so forth. The white minority-owned businesses can be a sticky wicket sometimes, colleagues, and that's a conversation that should be had in and of itself. Sometimes, for example, a Caucasian female would be the face or the head of the organization, but when you dig down and peel back, there's primarily Caucasian males that actually are and make up the composite of the business. But that that's just part of this. And so when Jeff said I couldn't quite peel and disaggregate the two, that's work that that we'll need to continue to do. Now, good news is, I have some personnel that I've been talking to and that I think would be very good people to assign to this work, and and we could begin then to to do some of the support services, the outreach, the education pieces that must go with this, the motivation, and say, hey, you know what? You can grow your business. You ought to grow your businesses and add more services to to your present repertoire. Those are things that can be very motivating and encouraging. Sometimes businesses don't know where they can expand and how they can expand. So that that connection to those educative services is something that we can improve upon and be helpful with. The other issue, though, and sometimes it's a stumbling block, is that sometimes businesses don't want to go through all of that it takes to become certified, and that in and of itself can be challenging for some for some businesses. So the alignment and the work to get more into the gap of this is where I see us heading, colleagues, and I think the first thing needs to be people. And I'm thinking of two, at least two individuals here in terms of the roles. One role over in Jeff's wheelhouse, and perhaps another role over in legal, the services, legal department, and the two working very closely together, I think, will make a powerful combination to help expand and grow minority business participation in the Buffalo Public Schools. So that's where we are. That's our three-slide presentation, and I think at this point, we can open up for discussion, comment, questions, and so forth. Ms. Woods, Chairman Woods, back to you.
Okay. Um, I I do see a hand up. Let's see who this is. It says there's a hand up. Can I don't say who it is. Who is it?
It's Hurd.
Hurd? Oh, okay. Mr. Hurd, what's your question?
How you doing? Hey, first, Mr. Pritchard, thank you for doing all the detailed work to get these percentages and and all the information back to the board about a minority participation and our outreach to the community. And thank you, Dr. Cash, for also supplying And thank you, Dr. Cash, for also supplying more efforts to our reach out to these individuals who do own businesses and possibly work and get them certified in the future. It's very important for our community and very important goals to establish. And I believe that, you know, it takes a full effort of people, not just the board, but this community and other organizations working together to meet these demands, you know, to kind of fill in some of our NWBE and WBE and BE statuses. A question to Mr. Pritchard, I know you mentioned about our church groups or groups that are nonprofit that may not be able to utilize these, these, these recommendations about moving forward, but how does this affect non-for-profit, for-profits organizations? Could you explain a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'd have to get the exact details on who's eligible to be a certified minority or women owned business, but there are entities that are just, they're not eligible to be, to be that. So, you know, we have vendors, so we, we have a, a large, you know, our vendor system includes other schools, other school districts. Those, those are not, you know, there are, you know, I believe not-for-profit organizations or other governments, those cannot be certified MWBE. So that, that's not, you know, that certification is not necessarily the be all and end all of every, of every, every vendor. It, it's, you know, that's, that's basically what the, you know, how the law is structured is, is around, I believe, for-profit entities being, being eligible for certification provided they're women owned or minority owned or both.
Okay, but have we looked at not-for-profits, for-profits? We have 501(c)(3)'s and 501(c)(4)'s.
Yeah, my understanding is that not-for-profit are not eligible to be an MWBE.
But is there not-for-profit, for-profit? So that, that means be a group like United Way or Goodwill Associates, where you're actually making a profit, but you still give services and can, can give and deliver services.
I, I'm not sure I can answer that. I, I'm, I'm thinking that all those organizations are, are not-for-profit. You know, every, even not-for-profit companies still maintain fund balances, you know, they may run surpluses, but the idea of that they generate profit to provide to an owner or a shareholder is sort of, I think, the distinction between not-for-profit and, and, and a for-profit company. You know, for-profit companies are trying to make money. Not-for-profit are trying to serve a, a greater purpose. And any quote unquote profit that they might have is really meant to be reinvested into that entity, not, not for takeout as, as, you know, as an owner.
Yeah, generally it's, it's used for overhead and just meeting the demands of, of the company. So we look at possibly advertisement or community outreach programs, things in that manner. So we do have some that may be qualified, but let's talk later.
What you could do, Mr. Heard, is give us a list of any entities or organizations that that may come to mind or you're interested in inquiring about specifically, and we'll look into it. We'll, we'll call the Division of Minority and Women Owned Businesses at the state level, and we'll get a, a nice report to you for those nonprofit and for-profit entities that you may be thinking of. We'll be happy to look up, look into that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, Board Member Heard, just because a church group or a nonprofit group isn't a, isn't going to give us credit for our MBE, WBE program, doesn't preclude them from working with the board. So, you know, we can't get a two for maybe, but, you know, we still can work with them. So don't be disheartened. I see a hand up from down in City Hall. Board President, Lou, you have a question?
I, I do actually have a few questions. Thank you for recognizing, Paul. Jeff, have you, have you disaggregated the data to see by contract size for MWBE vendors? Because oftentimes the, the size of the contract, just because many of our, our vendors either can't get bonding or they don't have the capacity, you know, there, there's a variety of reasons why they're unable to bid on a larger contract.
Yeah, yes, specific to that question. So, you know, we have the, the data summary that, that's in that handout is made up of, of many, many individual awards, all in detail. So this is just an accumulation of all that. What I tend to look at, if, if you look at on that, the, the slide that we had, the, the number of awards that we had that were compliant with our policy in 2022 was about 5.45%. The actual dollar awards to minority and women owned businesses was only about 2.9%. So that tells you that of the awards, even if, if the number of awards just in total count was about 5%, it's only, it's a little over half of that is actually in terms of the dollars, which means that, that the minority and women owned businesses tended to be smaller on average than, than the non. And that's something, you know, we've, we've seen that across all the years, that we've seen that same thing, that, that minority and women owned businesses on average are going to tend to be on the smaller side relative to some of the larger vendors that we work with. Just, and there are obviously some very big vendors that, that we work, you know, that we work with.
Yeah. That was going to be my next question, Jeff, is that oftentimes the other thing that you find when you start looking at the data is that we have a lot of sole source contracts. We have a lot of contracts that we are obliged either by, we, we have obligations or we make purchases, like, let's say like health insurance, something along those lines that we are, that we are obliged, but, but the number of vendors we have are very limited. And that takes a large part of our budget, a huge part of our budget. And there's a lot of services like that, transportation and on, along those lines. Some of our biggest expenditures do not have an MWBE person or an entity that we can deal with. So, or that we can, that we could, or that could provide the services, I should say. So I don't know if you've looked at that yet, to try to start disaggregating the data along those lines. In terms of the overall percentage of contracts and what's obligated for us to spend that we don't really have a lot to, or we have limited options, you know, because that's part of the things where we've looked at this in the past, but that's one of the, the, one of the problems, I shouldn't say, one of the, one of the hurdles that we've had. And then we started looking at many of their subcontractors that they dealt with. So the secondary was even though they themselves didn't, but many of their subcontractors are MWBE, just gives a more complete picture.
Yeah. And, and Lou, that is, that is one of the next big steps. And, and there's a, there's a, a large component of monitoring with that, that we're not, we're not quite ready for, but especially on larger awards, they, you know, they can identify for us very specific minority and women owned businesses that work for them. And, you know, that will be something we could certainly monitor. We're not, the, the data that you see here is actually just on the primary award. So we, so we do, we do miss those. And, and that's something that, you know, we have to stress a, as a district to our vendors in terms of that if, if you're a large vendor and you are, you know, you, you're, you're looking to win a large award, you're going to have to identify for us, you know, subcontractors that are minority and women owned businesses. And that needs to be a, a large component of, of what they do in terms of, you know, winning our business. Because that's, that is true, that when you look at the really, really big ones, you know, those, those often are not going to be the minority and women owned businesses. They're, you know, they're, you know, they're publicly traded companies and, and things like that. So, you know, we've got to, we've got to work them on to the next level, the next, you know, the next level of that. What I do like about the data that I shared, and that's in that two-page handout, is that in what, what we are, by, by looking at the data in this way and looking at the awards that go to the board, both, both competitive and non-competitive, we are excluding some spending that would other, that could otherwise be compared. So like the charter schools are excluded from this, other agencies are excluded from this, other public schools and, and things that we pass money through, those are all excluded out of this. So what, when you look at the data that's in here in terms of our total awards, that's a, that's, you know, it, it gives a better picture of the total dollars that could potentially be included in this for comparative purposes because we're able to, you know, we're able to kind of pull out some of the things like the charters and so forth that, that, you know, we're just a pass through for, that we really have no control over.
So I have two questions and I'll be quiet, I swear. With respect to monitoring, how are we, I, I know you, you mentioned monitoring. Are you, that seems to be, you know, that as we proceed forward and this becomes a more and more of a priority, how are we going to address monitoring, Jeff? Have you had any discussions about that?
So there's, there's many phases or components of monitoring. I think at this point, I think we have a pretty good way of capturing the awards and the data that is brought to you for initial authorization. As, as, as Dr. Cash was mentioning a little while ago in terms of sort of some departmental resources, that's where we're, you know, where we got to take that next step in terms of how are we monitoring, once we capture subcontractors, how are we actually capturing the data to ensure that that actually happens and things like that? So that, that's kind of that next phase that we have in terms of the staffing resources that, that are really going to, that'll get us to that. So we are, you know, with this data, you know, we are, we're, we're not 100% there in terms of being able to show, show the full picture and to monitor it over the course of multiple years.
Yeah. So, so Lou and colleagues, that's the next important step that we haven't taken this far. And I'm, we're right on the cusp of it. I just want these two people that I'm trying to, what's the word? I'm pretty good at it. I'm trying to influence them to take the job because I think this is a full-time enterprise. This is something that you can't do as part of, you know, I got all these other things to do and I'll try to get to this. The way I understand this role now, especially looking at this data, this, this takes a person who is well organized, compassionate about this work, really wants to see the mission realized and, you know, will be full-time and weekends. I mean, I just say that because sometimes that's what we do. But, you know, you do whatever you have to do to, to get us making a bigger dent into this. But you, you can't just set a goal. Goal is not enough. You got to first grow these organizations. And I want a particular emphasis on the minority aspect of this. So, you know, doesn't have to be a minority, but I'm talking to several minority people within the organization who I think would be perfect for this kind of, of role, given their work performance, given what they, you know, have shown to date about all this. So, so that's the answer, Lou, to, to the monitoring piece. I don't look at this as Jeff so much. I mean, he can, he can get the numbers together out of his department, but we need somebody that's, that's all over this on, on a full-time basis. Outreach, training, coordinating, teaching, educating, assisting, connecting, organizing, all, all of that will be part of the skillset. And I'm suggesting one, if not two, people share in this work.
I, I agree, Dr. Cash. The, the last thing I just, what have we done before you onboard this person or these people? What have we done with respect to outreach to our MWBE community? Have you guys established a listserv? Are you doing, do you have them registered on the website? What have we been doing with respect to outreach?
So, so there's several things. You know, one of the, and I think we've had three of them so far. Ramona Reynolds' office actually is coordinating outreach sessions, and I think we've done at least three of them. We, we have representatives from the purchase department that are out there to, to really show, you know, to kind of go over the types of things that we do, how, how folks can, you know, can, can see what, you know, what bids and things like that are out there. We implemented the, that Bonfire system, which is an electronic means of tracking, well, of, of issuing bids and RFPs. We actually issued a request for information several months ago, asking for minority and women owned businesses to identify themselves to us. Said, we're, we're looking to identify minority and women owned businesses. Please tell us who you are, what you do. We are asking vendors and folks to sign up in, on, on that, and you can get through it through our web, that Bonfire platform, so they can, they can receive notification when we actually have a bid or an RFP that goes out there. And some folks want to know about everything and some may choose to just pick a, a handful of things that they're, that they're interested in. So, you know, we're trying to do as much outreach as we can. Trying to think if there's anything else that I'd written down.
Jeff, while you were looking for that, another outreach session will be conducted at the South Park Parents Center, South Park Parents Center at South Park High School on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday at 5:00 PM. That's informational. Jeff, you found what you're looking for?
Well, the other, you know, anyone, and, and I try to refer people to sort of our, our normal processes. So if you go to the district website, you go to the purchase department, you know, there is, there is information for, for anyone and in particular minority and women owned businesses, you know, doing business with EPS. Click on some links, you can see some of the things we do. You can see how to sign up for, for notices. You know, so to the extent that we can get people to, you know, get sort of eyes on our, on, on our webpage, that can help identify more and more. And, and obviously, you know, if, if, if board members can bring some of that information to us, their contacts and, and, and share with them where, you know, where we have our procurement information, that, that just any, whatever, whatever we can do to, you know, widen that, that pool. And, and again, competition is great. We want as many folks as possible because the more people you have competing for things that we need, the more you're, you're likely to get a better product out of it or products.
Okay. Dr. Cash and Jeff, I want to commend you as far as the efforts Ramona Williams has been making. I attended her first session, she's giving up her Saturdays, and we've advertised and challenged the Criterion on various African-American radio shows and on, on the radio and put it out there so everyone would know that Buffalo Public Schools is looking to talk, to have conversations with and extend the opportunities to minority businesses who enrolled in our system, to know what we offer. And they're asking the questions, the key questions of what are the problems that you have in doing business? And I talked, spoke to Dr. Reynolds, Dr. Williams, Ramona, and she said that at this last one, this Saturday, she's giving up her Saturdays, I'm so proud of her. The vendors who were there asked if they could be paired with the, our normal, you know, the old boys and that, where we, we do business with these businesses, every time we look, these are the piece of, people get our million dollar biggest contracts. But if these minority businesses could meet, have a meet and greet, so that these businesses would know, hey, I'm here, I can be your partner, so that you can meet some of that 25% by just subcontracting and working with me. Because a lot of businesses are saying they don't know about minority businesses, so they can't outreach, work with, or increase our, our MBE effort. The other things that we need to look into and work on, structural blocks. When, when public entities like the county, the city and Buffalo Public Schools pay people, the little guy can't carry us. We have to pay them timely. At Erie County, what we did was we, we wrote in our procurement policy that we would give 25% right upfront when they won the bid, so that they're not carrying us and carrying the burden and debt and borrowing for a larger entity. The other thing you mentioned, which is true, is bonding. The cost of bonding is, is prohibitive to smaller businesses. And the county also came up with a C-type bond that smaller vendors wouldn't, wouldn't be so expensive. So we need to make structural changes to make this not a dream, a wish or validity, but reality. So I am proud of the efforts we are making, getting the data, and as you said, we've got a long way to go, but at least we're starting. So thank you for that. Mr. Heard, you had your hand up?
Yes, yes. I just have a question. I'm sorry, I, I came in a couple of minutes late. I just got off a plane. But have we? But, uh, uh, have we spoken with the SBA on behalf of this matter of doing training with individuals? That's one question. I might have missed it.
Small Business Administration?
Yes.
Jeff, you have a thought on that?
I, I'm not aware if we have.
Okay.
Good idea.
I, I know that they offer classes periodically for training for our minority businesses, the small business. I actually took the class, uh, a couple of years ago. How to, how to start off businesses. And I did receive a question from a person by text messages asking how long would the classes be? I, I believe they imagine if they started from zero, if they want to start. And this person is, um, speaks dual languages and want to help with the district, but one of those RFPs want to come out as far as for translators.
Um, Terrence, I think we do our translation service. RFPs, I think they're typically in the spring. I can confirm exactly, but, um, from what I recall, we, we do it in early spring. And it goes for board approval, um, before the end of June.
Okay. Okay. Would that come out as a RFP for translator or that's just a hire from the district?
Well, we, we have, uh, several translation services. Um, like I know there's like a, a phone service. I think there's a, I, I guess I can't speak top, but I believe there's three different services that we typically procure, um, through vendors, um, every year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pritchett.
Okay. Uh, the only, last thing I want to say on the MBEWBE, uh, uh, section of this is that we do have a minority vendor that came before the board who does provide, uh, COVID materials and masks. And there was a question about a bid that was put out. He was not given or sent any information about it. And I'm hoping that we can address that because, uh, that the bid was, um, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. It would make us look good if we at least extend the information and the offer to people who are complying with getting on our vendor list. So that's the last thing that I wanted to say about that.
Paulette, um, actually, thank you for that question. So I, I think that, that bid we did issue, reissue that bid. Uh, if it has not gone out yet, it is going out this week. Um, your, your feedback, um, a few weeks ago in terms of that, um, you know, was very helpful for us. So, that should be out there. Um, I'm hopeful that this vendor has already seen it, but I guess I'm not 100% sure if it has been issued yet, but it is supposed to be this week.
Well, he's monitoring our MUNIS system. He put, he signed in for every bid. So you will get some success. There are people who want to work with us, ready, willing and qualified to be the best and the lowest bidder. So I'm just trying to get this, get this ball rolling. So, but thank you, Jeff, for reissuing that bid. I appreciate it. Dr. Cash, you ready for the next section? I don't see any other hands. Okay.
Well, that was a good conversation. Uh, we appreciate your questions and, uh, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you, Jeff, for your work of your staff. Colleagues, I would recommend, um, maybe every three months to have an update, uh, on this, this work. I think monthly, certainly you can have a list, but the data won't change so much monthly. But every three months, I recommend. And, and we could do it either in a, in a work session, just as a short updating your part in your sess- session, Paulette. Or we could, we could do a bow fan where we, um, send something by email to you. Looking at Jeff's data, the way he has it framed there, that's a good track to run on. But we'll be more aggressive about this as soon as I can get the personnel that I'd like to see working on this.
Well, you're always welcome to give the community and the board an update in this vehicle so they can see the good work and the progress. They need to know.
All right. Thank you. All set.
Okay. So we're moving on to the, uh, American Rescue Program and the wonderful things you're doing to expand education.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm gonna let you, um, run through this and, um, you know, we, we're running out of time here. So be expeditious. Uh, colleagues, this is pretty straightforward and you'll really like the graph that we put together and some of the alignment data that we put together that matches up with what some of, much of what the community has asked for. So, uh, I'm particularly pleased with that alignment. Jeff, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so there, there's four slides here. I will try to move through them very quickly. We've given presentations to the board, to the community, to other groups, uh, several times on ARPESR. So this will be a, a very brief update of where we're at. Um, and there's four slides in total. The, the, the main point that I want to show on this is just for, for board members and for the public, the, the fourth bullet down. We have each of the applications for the SRR2, 89 million and SRR3, 200 million. Those are, those app, the full applications are posted on the web. There's the link, um, which you can see there. It can, it can be obtained right from the main page of the web. There's a, an ARP plan and those budgets are in there. One of them's 50 pages long. The other's 100. Uh, the SRR2 has been approved by the state. SRR3, we believe we're within probably a week or so of that, uh, being fully approved by the state. Community involvement, um, has been stressed as a very important component of ARPESR. And if we could go to the next slide, I'll, I'll show you some data that we had put together, um, a, a little while ago, uh, relative to our, uh, our spending alignment with, um, the overall, uh, community recommendation, um, groups that we had. So this, this is a table, um, takes a little bit of studying, but, uh, essentially you, you probably all remember the document that, um, Jamie Cohen, along with Will Caress, has put together that identified, um, taking our ARP plan and breaking it out into 19 different categories. So one through 19. Uh, and what we had done is I asked every cabinet member through all the, all the individual request items that they had, that made up our roughly $289 million budget. I asked if they could please identify for me which of these categories the, the, the budget items aligned with. And you'll see that for each of those 19 categories, um, you can see the name of the category. And there were, um, a total of 296 budget items. And some of those could be one small line or it could be a larger thing that had, uh, you know, that were in alignment with these 19 categories. The total dollar amount for each of those, and this was compiled by me based on the original request. Some of the final requests were a little bit different than original, but it, it was, it was relatively close. About 246.6 million. So what that means is that there were some requests that when we went through, they didn't align perfectly enough with, um, you know, with some of the community feedback. And we said, you know, we'll leave them off. It's, it's better to make sure that they're, that, that we're identifying the things that we saw in the community feedback. And what we, uh, implemented and put requests in for, um, for budget programs. Uh, the last column on this are the number of recommendations in the feedback. And you can see that of those 19 different, uh, categories, some of them had, uh, uh, many more, um, recommendations than others. Some, some had one or two. Others had, um, like instructional form, technology, higher standard, 57. Student supports. There were 35 individual, um, compiled community requests. Operations and infrastructure. There were actually 28 of those. Public engagement, communication. So you can see, um, family and community engagement, um, was another one. So you can see in these, the, the various number of, uh, of recommendations that were gathered through all these, these various public meetings. So I, I put that in the table to kind of see how things lined up. And then, Admir, if we can go to the next slide. This, this heartened me quite a bit when I saw this. I actually, um, we didn't ask the community to, um, to cost out anything. But when we look at the individual, those individual, um, categories that were, that made up the, um, the ARPESR plan. I actually plotted the number of individual, um, the number of, of, uh, community recommendations in each of those areas. And then I plotted the number of recommendations that, you know, that, that we as a, as a district accumulated, um, based on that feedback and based on our, um, our analysis of, of what we felt made sense to, um, to put into the plan. And when you look at this, um, they're actually correlated really well together. In, in general, the, the, the areas where you have the highest interest, the highest number of community, um, feedback in terms of the number of items were also areas where we had, um, the highest, uh, the, the highest number of individual budget items. It's not a perfect correlation. But it, it, it felt, when I looked at this, um, after taking that data, compiling it, speaking with, uh, all of my colleagues, I'm like, it seems like we're on the same page largely with what community was looking for. Um, and, and, and that's, I think, what this, what this shows. Next slide, please. This slide, you, you've seen that pie chart before. Um, and that pie chart breaks down our spending into really, really high categories. I don't have for, for the board tonight, um, just because of time. I don't, I don't have a more detailed report for you. But I, I always like to, in every presentation on the ARP plan, I always like to have the overall, uh, pie chart, you know, where you can see that, that orange section takes up over half of it, expanded EB instructional initiatives. That's, that's the most of what we have in our budget. Information technology. That information technology is primarily, those are all things that are going into the classroom. You've got student supports in yellow. And then COVID operations and facilities, any of the, um, any facility-related things, um, PPE, cleaning, all those things. And, and also there are some, some central office supports too, to make sure we can process all these transactions. So when we look at it at a high level, that, that aligns, I think, really well with what we've seen peers do. And also really with what our mandate from the beginning was in terms of what, you know, how, how spending should probably align. The, the table on the left, um, so we're done with the pie chart now going over to the left. I'm, I'm just showing you here, uh, and this is based on the information that we had in our first quarterly financial report. Just a, a quick summary of the two programs, SRR2 and SRR3, 89 million and 200 million. And then you can see where the funding aligns on a year-by-year basis. 124.7 in year one. That's the year we're in right now. Next year is 91.7 million. The year after, 73.2. Now, obviously this will change. Um, but that, that's what the initial submitted budgets. Some things are in there. They're in year one, but they're really things that are going to take multiple years, but they're things that we may be able to encumber in the first year. So it, it looks like it's a lot of dollars, but some of the, some of those dollars are naturally going to progress into subsequent years. But we really only have three years in total. So everything we're doing is going to be encapsulated in the next, uh, next handful of years. Fiscal year-to-date spending. I ran this, um, I ran this on the 5th of this month. We've spent so far in, um, if you, if you go and, and run all of each of these programs, um, we spent about $16.8 million so far. And we have encumbrances, which are basically commitments to spend, and requisitions, which are requests of about 11.3 million. So that's about 27, 28 million, um, so far in spending. We have available funds this year of 96.6 million. It sounds like a lot, um, and, and it is, but we're, we're really starting to ramp up. You know, we will, you'll, you'll see that in the coming months, um, with board recommendations and, and things like that. You know, this spending, it's, when I look at that 16.8 million and 11.3 million as well, that's as big of a grant spend as we've ever had in a single grant in a single year. And, and so far, really only about a third of the, you know, half, a little less than half of the full fiscal year, but school doesn't start till September, you know, full school year doesn't start till September. We've actually spent a fair amount. There's a lot of resources have gone into the schools already. In terms of, uh, summer programs, technology, um, additional staffing, things like that. So there's, uh, you know, we'll, we'll have a more detailed reporting for you that will show you, um, you know, that will show you, uh, by, you know, almost down to the departmental level of the spending and, and where, where it is trending on a, you know, month, probably on a monthly basis. I'll have that for you shortly. But I don't, I, you know, it's just given the time. There really isn't time to go over that tonight. So I just wanted to give this really quick summary. That is my update on the ARPESR monitoring at this point. Um, if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Okay. Jeff, on, on the slide where you were showing, um, the categories of spending, you were saying from, um, the 19 initiatives. Can you go back to that? Because, uh, I want you to elaborate on what the $77 million financial consideration item, that's a big number under that. I don't know if that was category number 19. Yes, category number 19. Um, what is that broad category with $77 million in it?
Yep. Um, okay. And actually I have a note. I, I figured somebody would ask. So there is a note on the bottom of this. That includes, uh, funding related to schools. Um, when we, um, you know, one of the, one of the ask was about, you know, resources for schools. So funding that we are allocating, that will be allocated to the schools is in that category. And I, I wrote down, it's about 54 million. There's also, um, indirect costs. That's 24 million. That's the, um, that's essentially that overhead component that the general fund charges the grant and that the general fund will utilize in years four and years five to continue some of these programs that we're establishing now in year one, two and three. So that, that's, that's that, what that section is.
Again, you're, you, can you be more definitive? You're saying funding for schools. Are you, what is that? You, you're going to give us some more staff for emotional social learning or is it more the counselors, the, the attendance teachers to find our large lost kids? I mean, it, it can't be, it can't be like the computer updates because that's a different category. So I'm still kind of not clear what, with that 54 million, you're saying is directly to the school, what?
Yeah, it's not, uh, it's, it's all of the above in those areas. So it's not, it's not completely defined at this point.
Okay.
And again, the, in the reporting that will show you in the coming months, in terms of sort of the departmental by departmental, um, spending, you'll, you'll be able to see that outlined a little bit better where it's not here.
Okay. Well, I, I think most of the board members were hoping that before the actual grant request got sent to the state and they go and approve and all it, that, uh, you, the, that you, Superintendent, and the, uh, staff would have made a detailed presentation to the board on, okay, here's what we're talking about. And I, I still think that is necessary, given the magnitude of these funds. And even though you're saying it's posted, uh, on the, uh, on the, on the, uh, school website, I do think we need to plan and put some time to go through that and make sure the board is comfortable with, well-aware of, and can explain to people who are asking us, what are you doing with this $289 million? How is it going to extend learning? How's it going to affect our kids? What role do we have in it? Uh, this is a, I mean, people see this as the, a really unique one-time opportunity and they want to understand it, have a part in it, have a voice in it. And the board needs more details on it. You agree, Dr. Cash?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And, and that may take a, a good, uh, devoted session, like two hours, two and a half hours or so to share that with you. Certainly. But, but all of the things that you talked about are in, uh, this ARPESR spending. Each one of the, uh, major if you will, could talk about how the strategic priority spends that are in these budgets are supporting schools and students. And families. I mean, all of it is in there from, from guidance counselors to music teachers, to more social workers, to, you know, individual schools having some autonomy about what they need based on data. having some autonomy about what they need based on data each year, several positions allocated each year to these schools, all the schools. You know, it's a lot, it's really exciting. And we'd be happy to take, take some time and go through all of that.
Well, that's extremely important. That's why I said for finance and ops, this has to be an ongoing item for our agenda, for my agenda. But I think we may even need just a special session to go over this kind of money in detail. Because I think, given some of the trauma that is going on with our schools, the children coming back and having to reacclimate, shall we say, and the bullying that's going on, some of the violence, you know, incidences that are going on. You know, each of our schools is going through some transitions. And I think board members may have questions on, hey, is that in there? You're saying it's in there, well, where is it in there for my school? You know, and, well, you already know, some of my schools, Emerson et cetera, some of the downtown schools are having some significant issues. So, yeah, I really would like to have a detailed presentation to the board so we can know on a school-by-school basis and with your overall vision how this is changing the school system for the better.
Yeah, absolutely. Good questions, I think that's fair. I do want to be clear that three or four hundred kids are, you know, need a lot of support and help. And there's a lot of partners that we can partner with to help us with this. We don't see the schools only working and supporting these children that are in trauma and having difficulty. Many children you might not even hear from, they're silent and they're struggling internally with issues. And that's a, that's a difficult number to grab hold of. But we certainly are engaged regularly with our principals and with our teachers to tell us what they're seeing, what they need. And we're also looking at some partners from the community right now to assist with some of these high incident schools and high incident issues, like the aggravated assaults, the assault issue with kids fighting, the social media issues. That's going to take a robust, a robust plan to address. And so it's unfolding as we speak. So we have some flexibility in here. It hasn't all been, you know, accounted for in terms of it's going to be this, it's going to be that. We want some flexibility in this so that it can address emerging needs as well. So, yeah, we'll be happy to have that kind of presentation. And it'll be more than just Jeff and me. It'll be most of the cabinet, or at least a good half of the cabinet leaders would be sharing in that presentation. So schedule for the year, second of the year, you know, whatever, in the months ahead. And we'll be right at it with you.
Okay, because those are two things that I do think community engagement could be very helpful. One, you know, it's an open secret that there's a significant portion of our children who have not re-engaged with school. And we need to do, we need to reclaim our, reclaim our children and get them reinvested and involved in school. And then this violence problem where kids are doing stupid things. They haven't been in school so long, they, I mean, they forget you can't bring a toy gun to school. I mean, that's dumb. But, yeah, we need to address, we need the community to help us to address that. And we want to see how the American Rescue Funds monies are being directed at that. So, yeah, that's important. Any other board members have any questions on the American Rescue Act funds and priorities and problems that you're seeing at your schools? I don't see any hands up, but I just wanted to put that out there. Would, I don't see any hands, so Jeff, did you want to do, go over anything else? You said something about, something on the budget? And so we can close out this session and move to somebody else's?
I do, thank you. And actually, a good follow-up to your question, or really response to your question, is that on, and, you know, if we want to have the, Edmire, maybe if you could put the slides up really briefly. I did include a rough outline for our budget process. And we include in, in our budget process, grants are part of that. So as we're talking about, we want to know where these dollars are going when we're looking at school-based budgets, our overall budget. That's part of the budget process. Edmire, could you go one more slide, please? One more page. So I outline in here, you know, I'm not, you know, just very briefly skimmed through it, but, you know, December is really where we kind of kick off the budget. We meet with the governor. The superintendent and I usually prepare. We try to get it by the end of December. Sometimes it goes into January, an overall document that lays out the process that we're going to follow. I think it will largely address a lot of your questions in terms of how are we going to know where these things are really kind of getting into and incorporated into the overall school-based budget, which includes those grants. So December, January, February is really a lot of the preliminary work on the budget. Next slide is March, April, and then May. So you all have this, we generally follow it relatively closely. Some things do have to be, get jiggled around a little bit, but there are committee meetings in every month. Typically, as we get closer to May, we'll actually have supplemental committees. The, you know, the overall state budget, April first, is when we typically will know that. Although back in January, in January, which is in the future from now, but prior to April, we will have early indications of what the overall general fund budget is going to look like. And at the end of April, our four-year plan submission to the control board. And then, you know, we would be targeting a May twenty-twenty-two board approval. So within the confines of that, this timeline, there will be significant discussions and share out really of how the overall ARP plan this year, where we are this year, and how it will be incorporated into next year. That's largely going to be the big, the big change for us is to really have that incorporated into this process. So that was all I wanted to go over with the timeline.
Well, you know, the state, our state representatives were really good to us. They gave us significant increases in our state budget. They put a plan in for a full phase-in of state aid, full funding of state aid. And since they gave us that additional funding this year, I think they're going to be looking to see what we did with it, how it impacted educational opportunities for our children, how it's making a difference, you know, before they go ahead with the next year and the other couple of years of phasing in full funding. So I'm hoping we're going to be ready to say, wow, this is what we did. And, and, yeah, your efforts and your fighting to give us more dollars is paying off and, and, you know, is having an impact on our students. So that's, that's all I have to say about your timeline going to the state for more money.
Yeah, I would, I hear that, Paulette, and certainly on the surface of that, that sounds right. But I got, you know, big change and little change happens not always fast. So some of these things that were in our plan and that we're working as we see and observe our children, it's going to take a minute to bake, it's going to take a minute to bake. And you're going to have to understand the patience required with this. There's some major, major issues with young people all over the country, all over the country that we're seeing. And we're going to put money into it, but there's also some in-kind kinds of things. Really going to be about time and the way we work with our children, the mentors. They need, they almost need one-on-one mentoring, many of our kids. They need people that are listen and give them tough love, you know. It's a lot of, lot of needs that are emerging here. So we're going to have to be a little patient, they're going to be a little patient.
Well, Dr. Cash, I, Dr. Cash, I just wanted to say that you've got a lot of issues with housing our students as far as, you know, the DaVinci situation. We need to find places to house our students. You've got the issues with adults being on the third floor of a lot of our buildings. So we can't expand programs that are in demand, that our kids want. We, you know, we've got, we've, we've got money now. So I'm hoping that while we have the opportunity and you've got the resources, there's some of these things that are hard, you know, and are headaches for you, and we need to move on, that we can do it. Because I think that will, that will impress our state legislators. It will help our kids, it will help retain our students.
Yeah, it's in our plan, there's no question. Don't, don't misunderstand me. We share your enthusiasm, we're working on it just as, as fast as we possibly can. One of the things that sometimes slows processes for big change is this whole RFP process, you know? It's what you got to do, but sometimes it takes, it takes several months to ramp up and get, get all that solved and get it, get it done. So that's why you'll start to see an uptick in all of this as those processes come to, come to a close and we can start to present the winning, the winning bids and so forth. So bottom line, we agree, we agree, we agree. No argument.
That's what I was going to say, we're, we're supporting you addressing all these issues because it is critical to the success of our students and our parents.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I have for finance and ops. I don't know what committee is next, but thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard, board members, and Dr. Cash.
Thank you.
So I believe my committee is next. And on the agenda, we will be discussing the superintendent's goals. So I would like to, I don't know, Dr. Cash, was there a slide presented for it? Or are we working through the board docs?
That particular document.
Yeah.
So I think it's better to work through the document.
So we're going to, we're going to, we're in the process of posting it to the, to the screen.
It is actually in board docs, so I'd like to direct my colleagues to go to board docs and go to executive affairs. And you will find the PDF there for your reference. Okay, it's a little low, a little small. I'd like to pick up the conversation where we left it off. And I'd like to create a few opening remarks based on our earlier conversation. Thank you. If you could scroll down to student achievement goals, I would appreciate it. Perfect. So the first thing is, I'd like to refer you back to President Petrusi's email indicating that this is just one piece in a larger conversation and a larger strategy that we have in order to work with our processes and to really get at the concerns that board members have brought to the table. There are a variety of things, superintendent goals, the goals that the district has embraced through the education bargain, the board goals, and a playbook by which we proceed forward to achieve them, as well as the process for the Council of Great City Schools. This measurement, it's really critical according to all of the best practices out there. So that includes the Council of Great City Schools for high-functioning boards, that includes NISBA, that includes NSVA. And it is the practice set by former Cotman, former President Cotman's work in terms of the kinds of superintendent goals we're going for. Those are ones narrowly focused on student achievement. This affords us to do a couple of things. First of all, and foremost, our students and our families demand and deserve increased student achievement. And this allows the district to continue to focus on those goals. It also is really critical in this particular time because what it does is it allows the district an opening to really look at the data of where our students are at and what we need to do next to move them forward and to continue the good progress that we've been making. They're smart, which means they're specific, they're measurable, they're actionable, they're relevant, they're timely, they all work with where we are. They're student achievement focused, as we've been, we've heard a couple of different times in my committee about the importance of that. So I'd like to discuss just these about the student achievement goals and see if we can move this forward. Because the sooner, there's a certain amount of urgency here. The sooner that we can establish this data and look at where our students are at and what they need next, the sooner we can get the kind of comprehensive work that we all really want. And indeed, even just in this last committee meeting in finance and ops, when we're talking about S R funding, we're talking about the kind of funding that's available to us. This helps us focus on where it really matters, which is the achievement of our students. So with that, what I'd like to suggest is that we follow our process in terms of getting comments from board members as we move forward. Any leftover questions? And I will take them, we'll address them. I'd like to keep this within an hour, so we're very respectful of your time. When we get close to the hour, if there's outstanding pieces, we'll go ahead and forward them to another meeting. But we really do need to move these forwards. I really can't emphasize enough the amount of urgency that we need here to move forward on these. So with that, I will start with Ms. Cotman. I believe you're muted.
I don't have any comments, I don't have anything to say. I had spoken at the last board member meeting that I feel that guardrails were necessary in order to be put in place before we could finalize this process so that we could include all of our constituents and let them know that we have also looked at them. But that's the only thing that I am concerned about is that I don't see the guardrails, and that's, that's my only concern. So if the process is that there will be no guardrails, then so be it. But that's the, that's the step that the board, I thought the board would over, would do to make sure that we covered the needs of the students.
I'd like to, I'd like to emphasize that guardrails aren't completely out of the picture since we want to still follow the Council of Great City Schools process. And as you point out, community input's really critical there. And so in that way, that's still on the table. But we're going to, as Mr. Petrusi pointed out in his email to our fellow board members, that's definitely on the table for moving forward. These are the superintendent's goals for right now, for this year, which need to be SMART goals so that we know where our students are going moving forward. Thank you for your comments. Dr. Evans Brown?
Hello. Yeah, I had an opportunity to go through the goals, and they certainly seem appropriate, doable, and clear. Yeah, so guardrails probably would help, but I think it's doable.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Mr. Hurd?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rivera. Yes, I think my concerns still remain the same from last. I did read over material also, opportunity to go in a little detail about it. And some of the questions that I have was bringing in parent concerns about the students and capabilities of the schools and giving, you know, correct education, you know, as needed per student. Also, you mentioned earlier, where are the students at? You know, just to clarify, you know, each building has different concerns and different needs. And just putting that in the broad specter of under Cass's goals that we apply for, I mean, it's a real cross and unfair. we apply for, I mean, it's, it's a real cross and unfair, you know, thing to get to the superintendent to say, you know, to reach every student, knowing that we have different concerns in these buildings and we're still working to try to achieve, you know, some of those goals, of those students.
So those are fair, and I think they're important concerns. So I'd like to propose two things. First, the goals are done in conjunction with the cabinet and with the superintendent. So I think your concern about fairness is a really good one and an important one to address. And I want to point out that they feel that this is that, that broad upper level piece for goals. The second piece, what you're speaking of, is also equally important, which is how individual buildings are doing. I know that our dashboard is one piece of it, but I think that an important thing to follow perhaps and revisit is some of our own operations in our own policies, which is that it does say that we can form committees to visit buildings, all the buildings in the district, once a year and get some of this information. I certainly would be willing to explore how we might be able to do that, especially to address the concern that you raise.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Rivera. And, and, and just looking into this, you know, I'm looking at the fairness of it to the superintendent and how we can, you know, establish, you know, a set of goals, but, you know, be directive towards our students' needs also. So, you know, and they vary, and they vary from education to mental health, mental awareness, and also COVID concerns. We know that a lot of, during this time period, you know, a lot of students had COVID and affect students in different ways and, and effects maybe still be long lasting after the virus is over. So, and how the education, you know, most places haven't really been done about education after COVID and, and effects it have on the student body mentality, especially if they lose a loved one or, or, you know, have a long sustained sickness. So some things are inadequate. Thank you.
I'm so sorry. Please go ahead.
I just, I just feel that some things are, you know, are not well established pertaining to those goals and pertaining to those elements that our, our teachers, our students, administrative staff members deal with, you know, on, on everyday basis. Thank you.
I understand what you're saying. I'd like to reemphasize that the goals are the what? And then there's a lot of conversation that has to happen about how. How are we going to get there? And I think all of this is really critical, especially when you talk about responsive education, trauma-informed education. This would be a worthy topic for the future too. And hopefully that we, my goal would be at our next meeting to talk a lot about that process. I'd like to move to Ms. Jay for her comments.
Comment is that I fully support this and I, I'm grateful to you for, for getting this accomplished, Dan. I know it's been a lot of work. I mean, Dr. Rivera.
Thank you very much. First names are fine too. Thank you very much for that. Ms. McCosy?
Yes, I feel like this is, um, it's worth three years, if you really think about it. We've been doing these goals, or very similar goals. We've been trying to push these along. And during the course of pandemics and, and all of the things that become roadblocks and all the things we have to address, I appreciate that you bring us back to, these are the what and the how has to be something that we discuss along the way. So if, I, I believe that the what has been in place and it's been emphasized and we, you know, these are great. And I just, I'd like to really move forward with these so we can really get to the how and address all of the other concerns that are coming to the table. So I'm in full support of pushing these through.
Thank you very much. And I would agree, I really, really want to move us forward to the next stage because as several of you have pointed out, actually all of you, all of my strong colleagues have pointed out, we really do need to talk about these things. We need to talk about the how, we need to talk about the needs that our students have, we need to talk about the funding, we need to talk about our process moving forward. All of these things are really important. We need to be able to move this forward in order to get to those things. So I appreciate that. President Petrusi?
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. You know, I, I like the goals. I think particularly during COVID, I think that some of these are very aggressive, which I know that many people would like to see because we want to make sure our students are performing at the highest level possible. The, the one thing though, that, that I, I agree with former President Cotman also about the guardrails and is under that overview of guardrails as well though, is that, that there are certain different goals that are more long-term goals that should be part of the conversation as well. You know, M W B, that we had a presentation on earlier, maybe it's improving our athletic facilities, maybe it's, maybe it's hiring teachers that look more like our student population. But those tend to be long-term goals that districts work on that take three or five years, if not longer. Just something I think that they should be part of the conversation as we go forward, knowing that there's these higher goals that we all strive to achieve, but just they're gonna take a longer period than, than eight months or a year or 15 months.
So I think this is an excellent point. I'm glad you bring it up because I agree with you that three to five-year goals for some of these other items are really important. And I agree with Ms. Felton Cotman that community input on those items is critical. And if we follow the Council of Great City Schools process with fidelity, we can put those things into place. And it is my full intention that we start that, restart that conversation, because we did start it before, that we restart that conversation right away in January. These goals are for one year only. This is for this year. And so all of these things for those three to five years, you're correct, you're both correct. We need the guardrails, we need the long-term vision. I really look forward to participating with the community about that. And if you recall that big fan that I had, all of the, all of the pieces are there from students to staff to families to community members to board members, all of that's going to happen. And I really am excited about moving forward that work as soon as we can. Mr. Scott?
Dr. Rivera, my opinion hasn't changed from the last board meeting where I was, or work session, I should say, where I was more than ready to move forward on these. I think they're well done, evidence-based, researched, based on best practice from Council of City, Great City Schools and NISBA. They're baked, almost overdone, so let's move forward and focus on the work. Thank you, Dr. Rivera.
Thank you very much.
I believe when we had that board retreat, like, like they said, three years ago, we had the same set of, it was, had to be three, but no more than five goals. And we said student achievement was the goal and 3% increases and here and there and there. We've been saying this, as you said, for a while. So I have no problems with this student achievement goals of getting a 3% to 5% increase. My que, my question was just simply, what is the base? Because we, we, you're pointing out, we only, we have the New York State assessments from 218 to 19. They just gave something out for, I guess, 220, which I haven't seen, I, I, I understand it's out, but I, I'd like to review it, but I, I'm hearing that's not, that's not merited, merited us, that's not a good basis. So I just don't know, you're gonna say a 3% increase from what? That, that's all my, my question. I know they said we put up a dashboard now of, based on various assessments, which may or may not be objective. I mean, the ELAs and, and the state exams are hands-off, they are factual, they are, they are broad, they compare all schools to other states. So if we don't have that, my real concern and question is, do we have anything, we can say we moved 3% of the goal that is factual, objective, and credible?
Well, it's a fair concern. And in my conversa, it is, you know, I'm going to point out that every district in New York State and every district in the nation that does this, any kind of testing, is going to have a similar problem right now. That's not an answer for you though. And so what I would like to do is to refer this one to Dr. Cash, who is more steeped in how we would work with this data to establish what, what an increase would be. Dr. Cash, would you mind commenting on this?
Well, my comment is that right there in the goal one overarching, it says establish a new baseline. And that's what, that's what needs to be established. I can tell you that the last time we did this, I think we were, when, when, when all the kids took it at 95% or higher, we were at about 21%, let's see math, I believe, and 24% ELA. That was the last time officially from the state that I can remember we were as a, as a district on three through eight assessments. Clearly, some schools were higher than that, some schools were lower than that. In this last assessment effort during COVID last spring, which was optional, the state gave us that chance, that opportunity, they didn't report the statewide data, which I, I don't know what it was. I was asking for it because that would be a basis. Sometimes when you have the state, even on a off-year like last spring, that gives us, that gives us something to shoot for. It gives us something to have some contextualized understanding about. So I was hopeful to get that because I could then say, let's shoot for that because it's a statewide norm, it's a statewide data. And I'd be okay with that, to try to, to try to do that. But right now, we have 12% English Language Arts and 9% for the math in the shortened, I'm sorry, in the last spring assessment that a small percentage of students took. But I don't think that should be the baseline because that's obviously low and obviously it's low all across the state. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna play games shooting off of something that is artificially low and, and not, and not really well understood because we don't have it from the state. So as I said, the real purpose was to try to establish a new baseline because this is the last year of the president's standards test. It's the last year of it, if they do it, because there is some movement generating right now to try to get some waiver of the accountability portion of this. But it won't be long before some districts will start to talk about these assessments again, because they're very, they're very flawed, to be frank with you, particularly for, against brown and black and brown children. That's an area of expertise for me and I could, I could give you a work session on that. But that said, I would say at minimum, we try to go in 21 plus three to five is 26, 27, and then 24 plus three or five is 27 to 29 to 30. Try to move toward that 30%. And, and that's, that's the best I can tell you relative to what I know about these, about these assessments. But it's gonna take several years to try to look at, and, and what I really want the state to do around assessments is to hold the line, get a mark, get something that you believe all children should learn. We're heading toward next generation learning standards. That means they're gonna shift the tests again. There'll be a new baseline emerge from the state on that. There'll be a whole set of training that we'll have to train our staff on, our teachers in particular. And then things will move again. So, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a complex answer to not what looks like a simple question, Paulette Woods, but it's really not that simple when it comes to these state assessments for three through eight, for three through eight.
So I think, I think it's clear that it's the will of the board at this point to ensure that we have rigorous, high standards for our students, but that they are fair. They're also fair standards. And that we need, that's what we need for our students. We want our student, and we need to know, we need to have some sort of accurate reading about where our students are at and how they're achieving. And can you talk a little bit about how these goals might help us get there, knowing the complexity of the data? Because I, what I find as a board member personally, that I struggle with sometimes, is that ever-moving target, right? So you'll look at the inside district data. So you look at, say, our students and how they perform on an ELA assessment in, we'll say, seventh grade. And you can see how they look building to building, to speak to Mr. Hurd's concern. And so then you know where to intervene in district. You know how they look this year to previous year, although with COVID, that can be really difficult. And it looks pretty good because you can see that they've been moving along, right? But then when you put that data in context with the state, it looks completely different. And so I think the question for the board is, will these goals ensure those high standards?
Well, that's not, that's not, that's not the right question. I thought what your question was, was how can we ensure that we are having rigor and I achieve, higher achievement for our students? And what I'm saying is, this, this will not ensure any of that necessarily. What, what you're gonna hear in the next presentation is how schools have a multiple approach to gauging student achievement and measuring student achievement. And those, those are avenues that we haven't really explored very much in the state. And every time I ask and have a conversation with the commissioner and the folks who, who set out these statewide standards, they, they don't have a good answer for this because they, under that pressure, they're under pressure from various groups to kind of make accountability sort of a punishment, gotcha kind of thing versus a real measure of any achievement of any students. I'd much rather, for example, in the, in the wonderful ways that our CLRI department has public speaking contests, student voice project, they have project-based portfolio projects that last a unit of a, of a whole half a semester, can be a whole semester. Students are so much more engaged in that kind of level. There's so much more exchange and interchange and growth among different cultural groups, even within a classroom. I mean, it's just, it just gives me goosebumps to see the kind of learning that happens that none of these tests are measuring. These tests are all messed up. The sixth grade math test, hardly any adults can pass. It's a really, really difficult test. And then you start getting on beyond that and it's just crazy. And I don't see any schools, public, Catholic, independent charter schools doing anything special with these tests. I don't. Now, I'll play the game and we'll keep playing the game, but what I'm more interested in is a well-rounded, all the children from, from students with special needs to English language learners, feeling great about themselves, coming to school, happy in school, engaged in their classrooms by good teachers, good first instruction that hit our four instructional priorities really well, and go, engaged in, in, in relevant and rigorous content. I mean, you're gonna hear about this in the next work session. And I'm gonna show you a two-minute, two, two-minute video segment spoken by children and students in schools like ours who say everything I'm talking about. And they'll say it much better than I'm saying it. So I just don't want you to get caught up in the oaky do that the only way you're gonna be able to tell the parents and tell the community that you're having much greater achievement is because your test scores on this thing went up by 20 points or 30 points. We can do that and we've shown that we can do that. But there's so much more that we're trying to provide that you want to provide for our students through the whole child approach to education. And that's what this whole RFP work is gonna be about for us. And that's what the goals and, and the work for the Buffalo Public Schools gotta be about. While we're climbing out of a, of a, of a pernicious public health crises... where, as some of you have mentioned, some students are in school, some students aren't. Some students are in school, but they're having really, really tough time, and they need a lot of support before we turn to page 57 and start working on the quadratic equation. And so I want to hear more from teachers, too. I want to see what teachers are going through in the front lines. I want to see what our guidance counselors are going through and social workers on the front lines about this as we proceed and let that conversation come into play as well. And they'll help us create a more contextualized understanding about how to ensure that we've got rigor and achievement among our students. You heard Ann Botticelli, I think it was the last work session, talk about iStation, ilearning, DIBELS, and in other ways that we are trying to assess student learning beyond just the test. So I think what we're going to show you is a portfolio of work. And that's the beauty of this dashboard now. They can show you a number of different tools by which to to measure and and be able to see how students are doing at the student level, at the classroom level, and at the school level, to Mr. Hurd's concerns. So I I think all of it is possible, colleagues. But I'm responsible for the aggregate, and this is sort of the aggregate look at this. And I'm willing to take whatever accountability goes along with it, if it's within this frame. And I tried to answer that the best I could.
I appreciate your answer, Dr. Cash. One, just two things, and then Ms. Woods, I know you need to speak as well. So would you say then it's fair in my opening statement that this is just one instrument by which we measure our students' achievement? Then it should be
Oh, absolutely.
A larger picture, which speaks to me as an educator because as somebody who's educated and who is raising neurodiverse students, I can tell you that these kinds of instruments do not accurately measure their ability. And that's from school psychologists, that's from teachers. That's not from me as a loving parent. That's something that's consistently true. And, you know, we have touched on it on this board a couple different times. There is very embedded racial and class bias in a lot of these instruments. And they're thinking, we really do need to be very careful about it in thinking about what that means. So I like the idea of a larger portfolio, and I'm looking forward to having more of that conversation. Procedurally, at this point, since we're coming up on the seven o'clock hour, and I know that we have a lot of business that both we need our staff to be fresh for and we need our public to be able to hear. If you could raise your hand, if you have another follow-up comment, I have my participant list open. We'll have a lightning round, and then I will close this out, and we will move this forward. Ms. Woods, I said you were next, so I'm going to go ahead and start with you.
OK, my question to you, and I understand Dr. Cash gave us a lot of information. I thank you, Dr. Cash. But again, I deal with management and actual measurable, achievable goals. So if we're saying that the last time they did any kind of test that said whether our kids can read and do math at grade level is we only had 21% and 24%. We know we've gone through two years of COVID, and we need something that says, where are they? I don't care if it if if the facts are that we only got 9% and 12% now. If that's what it is, I would like to hear who, what, or where, or what is going to give us that objective, credible baseline? You know, if the things the teachers are doing, if you want to say, this is, this is what we're saying is the baseline, and we're at, I don't know, 10 and 20%. But I'm concerned about the baseline.
You can't say 10 and 9. I just, I was pretty, pretty extensive about it. I said, that was just, that was a few kids. I don't want to go back to that and say, if you get to 16, you know, you you made progress this year. No, we we're going to, we're going to pick it up from the last time we got the data in. I told you that was 21 and 24, and that was two years ago. Even though, even though, that's not where kids are right now. Kids aren't two years beyond that because of the COVID disruption. So we're, so we're working on a theory of action that we talked to you about. We're working with a an accelerated approach to our instructional work so the kids can catch up and go ahead faster as long as all the teachers are rowing on this together and the and all the support staff. But we're going to, we're doing everything to try to put that structure in motion to to try to climb. But I can't tell you, you know, from the
Where we are now.
No, I can't tell you with it based on three through eight state assessments. I can only tell you we've ordered, we've ordered a benchmark assessment that would be taken before the high stakes test. And the reason we went and purchased those, you remember that? Two two benchmark assessments to try to give us, and they're supposed to be aligned to the high stakes assessments in April and May. They try to give us a sense of where our kids are. So as soon as we get those results, that's helpful. Grades, grades, quarterly grades are also another measure. Those are things we look at very deeply now because we have that data for every teacher in every classroom, in every subject. So there there's a number of things you can look at in 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 the progress base in what we call formative assessment. But the only high stakes summative assessments that we have are the one from the spring, which which the state said are not very useful at all. In fact, they said they're not useful, and they didn't even give us what the state average was, right? And just then said, the last one from 2019, 21%, 24%, 24% ELA, 21% math. And that still doesn't necessarily tell you all of what a kid can do or how they're developing. It simply tells you the percent of students who are identified as proficient on that test. Proficient, a percentage of children that are proficient, level three and level four. That's what it tells you. And that, what that means, proficiency, that's a whole nother conversation. But I I guess the state intended for us to say, yes, they can do math at that grade level, and yes, they can perform the functions and the standards associated with that grade level if they are in a level three and a level four. So that's always been the goal relative to these tests, is to move our students from level one to high level, I mean, to level two, and level two on up and into the level three and level four. And we have a persistent, longstanding record of having mostly level one students in terms of proficiency on these tests in this district. That's, that's what we have. So so you can look at it a number of ways. Again, it's trying to move level one students to a higher level of proficiency. And that certainly has been in our, in our work as well. And that's, that's about all I can say about it.
Thank you. And I look forward to Dr. Evans Brown's future student achievement work sessions because she, I know she plans to work on this and give us a sense of where students are at and have these reports continue so we can go ahead and continue to invest and make sure that we move our students forward, that we get their skills recognized, and that we get them to where they need to be in a way that's both supportive but also has those high standards that that we all have, including our families of our students, to have for them. Mr. Hurd, I have maybe about two more minutes left in this committee meeting. You're the only other hand raised. I want to give you the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Rivera. Dr. Cash, you mentioned earlier about playing the game. And you know that that refers to the test scores and how the state assessments are 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 used here in the city of Buffalo and across New York State. But in Buffalo, we kind of like playing two games. One is the three to eight state assessment scores, you know, for our elementary programs. And then in high school, where we have a different amount of subjects that's offered to kids, either vocational or future training for whatever course they want to be, if it's anywhere going from carpentry to to engineering. So how how do we look at the measurables and achievables? And how do we relate those to our high school programs? With we have graduates taking remedial courses in college, you know, for for one or two years, you know, and before they can, you know, take, take their college-level courses. How do we change that? What what do we do to to embrace, you know, education and and bring it up to a higher standard to help this valuation to be more prominent?
Yeah, I I thank you for the question. I think it's a, it's a good question. I mean, we've heard it before, but we've also, Terrence, produced so many specific accomplishments. If you go back to that district accomplishments document, where there's over 500 initiatives from pre-K to grade three, from grade three and four to grade eight, and then the high school secondary years. Almost, and then one goal one is academic achievement. And so almost all of those initiatives, just some really, really fantastic initiatives over the years that we have launched, initiated, provided, from more AP courses, more dual and dual language, dual enrollment courses, speaking contests like the August Wilson Speaking Series, you know, all of our best-in-class CLRI work, the community schools. There's so many things that we've done to to try to make sure that our students, if they're with us from pre-K to grade 12, they don't have to start that pernicious cycle of taking 30 to 60 courses. And they usually drop out before they do it, before they can even start on a Gen Ed-based course. We've launched innovative new high schools. Those new high schools are doing much of what you're talking about. If you look at the individual high schools, higher graduation rates and kids who who come out of those schools, and that's what we need to look at, go on to college and and are matriculating, persisting, and graduating. At the end of the day, you've got to get more people graduating from college and even into graduate school here in Buffalo. And that, that includes adults, that includes all of it. So there's a lot of measures that we can show, initiatives that we can show, that we have worked on to try to give kids a chance to graduate. And when they graduate from us, they can start fresh to begin work on their, on their undergraduate degree. The dual language work that we, I mean, dual enrollment work is is a big single initiative on that so the kids can begin coursework while they're still in high school or college. I think Hillburn College and some other colleges that you all are familiar with and have talked about, we're involved in some of that work for our students. But it's really a lot, Mr. Hurd. It's nothing, it's not a nothing, it's it's actually a something. And it's a very big something that we have done in the last six years to to try to eradicate that, that, that thing where you go on to college and you're not ready to 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 get right into their Gen Ed courses. So, good question, but I want us to be well informed so we can answer those questions to the public when they, when they sort of, when some continue to say that. Because we have done an awful lot in that regard. More needs to be done, but I want you to also lift up what has been done. And that doc documents the major district accomplishments from 2015 to 2021. All of you have copies of it. When you go through and look carefully at each one of those, that will tell you the story of what we're doing to change that, to change that narrative and change that picture for our graduates.
So I'd like to make one comment on this also because it really does touch on my life's work. As an academic dean who, this is what I do, is to talk about and think about and find ways to bring P through 12 and higher education closer together. I really endorse a lot of the dual enrollment work. I'd like to point out that there is a movement in higher education to move away from remedial education because it's a two sides problem. And not just in Buffalo, it's a national issue. So it's a two-sided problem, both with P through 12 and with higher ed in terms of how we work with our students when they reach our door in the higher ed side. And I think it might be a really interesting thing for us to start working on as we come around to the spring and we go through our pattern of work sessions about ways in which we really can ensure that we make that transition doable for our students, that they're supported in in wherever they choose to go to school, that they're supported, that they're prepared. And when we talk about preparation, it isn't just academic preparation. It's social, emotional preparation because a lot of times, that's the thing that really trips students up and ensure that they can go through higher education successfully, they graduate with a degree on time, and that they are eligible for further studies if they so desire, or they're career-ready. And so thank you for your indulgence on this one. As many of you know, this is a passion of mine. With that, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to close my work session. I thank all of you for your thoughtful comments and your patience with this project. And I look forward to moving these goals forward. Thank you.
All right. Either Chairman Petrucci or Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown. The only thing I would ask colleagues is get, if we could maybe take a two- or three-minute break just to go to the, go to the water fountain and and then come back. We're kind of at the middle of this, and these have been a lot of good. Could we, could we take a little break, not too much, maybe a quarter after?
OK, that sounds good. You have until 7:15.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll be right back. We'll be right back.
It's 7:15.
There you go, Kathy. I was just getting ready to say, put that old teacher hat on.
It's 7:15.
Get everybody back.
Yeah, they're coming in. We're going to get started with our student achievement work session. And we have a couple more people that are missing.
Yeah.
Another 30 seconds.
Calling my name. I used to hate when my teacher.
I know, I was going to say, "Terrence."
Even if it was good.
Ms. Hope J. Erin Dalton-Cottman. I used to hate them to call my name. But we'll get started.
Well, this is really, this is a really exciting session. All of them have been good so far, but this is kind of where the rubber meets the road and it's the juice of it all, if you will. So, I really want, I really want everybody to come on, you know, especially the board members. So, Admir, I'd like you to, Admir, is Admir there? Remember, I have a video that I want to tee up before we go into these. Now, don't do it yet, don't do it yet, Admir. Admir, hold on.
Hold on, allow Dr. Brown to open this up, please. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. Let Kathy open it. Dr. Evans-Brown, you give it over to me, and then we'll get going.
Correct. All of, yes, what I like about these sessions is that they all target student achievement. What's best for children? Are we perfect? No. We got ways to go, but we are doing some great things. And we also know that one size does not fit every child. I remember working briefly at School 69, and I told Dr. Cash this a few days ago. As a substitute teacher, I worked with, no, she had a system where there were all girls educating together and all boys. And what an experience that was. There are some advantages to single-gender schools. Young people have more confidence than their co-ed peers. They perform better academically. And it's more of a relaxed environment. They're willing to take more risks when they're not afraid of failing in front of the opposite sex. So, there's some advantages there. I enjoyed that concept, and I still enjoy that concept, and I support it. And like I said, one size does not fit everyone. And the complexity of our district is so huge and different that we have to have a variety of opportunities for young people to keep them engaged. Just nationally, the dropout rates are still high. And so, under Dr. Cash's supervision, he's bringing in other opportunities for young people. So, I'm going to hand it to you, Dr. Cash.
All right, colleagues, good evening. As we continue our work sessions tonight, this one is really important as a thread, if you will, to much of what we've been talking about tonight. One of the reasons I took a moment about, well, how will we know whether the kids can read and write if we don't have a baseline around these student tests, these state tests? It's a good question, it's the right question. But these issues of the test being the only indicator of how poor children, children who come from less abundant homes, not necessarily poor, because their culture is rich, but people who come from less abundant homes, these tests have never been designed for you to really hit the top mark on it. As soon as you get close, and we got close in districts that I've led before, they changed the test. Because it doesn't fit the narrative for everybody to be doing well, especially for minority children. If they're doing better than we're doing, then what do we have these things for? We got to be different, we got to be separate from them. Trust me when I tell you, I can give a work session on this. So, you have to have that only as one measure of how children are assessed. And what happens, and this is what I've seen the most in my career, is that when you follow this testing game all the way out to its conclusion, you end up having what's called good schools and failing schools. See? Good schools and failing schools. And what I've seen over the years is when you hang the moniker of a failing school onto a school, you affect the children who go to that school in a very negative way. You affect the staff who work hard and teach and nurture and help to develop our young people in those schools in a very negative way. You affect the community in which those schools reside in a negative way. And then it all fits into the larger pattern of it's expected over there, and what we have out here is better. Now, I've been in this work long enough to tell you that that ain't true either. Okay? What happens out there is they don't get the microscope that we get every day of every month of every life that we live. We're always under that microscope. And not everybody's built for that. I'm built for it, I can handle it. But it would devastate certain schools if they were all of a sudden told that they were a failing school. And what I can tell you is, one of the reasons the state did not release those results recently about last spring is because it would speak to all of those other 700 school districts, and it would affect their self-esteem of themselves. You see? Because you would be told, "You didn't do very well." Matter of fact, you failed. And so, it's a game that goes on with these test scores. Now, what I want to show you is how a child who did graduate from a so-called failing school, what she said about that. And she turned the narrative on his ear in two minutes and said, "So, did I go to a failing school? Look at me. It never failed me." And then the next one, two minutes, also talks about there's so much more that we are and that what we do than this thing we did that day in that two-hour period. And she says, "This is who I am. This is what we do." So, colleagues, I can't say it any better. Even the dynamite, top of the, top of the, top line, top tier, fantastic. Ladies, you're going to hear from next. First, let's tee this up, because they're going to be super. But let's tee this up with two brief video clips. One follows the other. And now, Admir, play that for the board. And then Fatima first with four or five slides. And then Toya Wilson will share and take about 30 minutes to go through this really special presentation. Admir, put it on the big screen, all the way out. Hit that little button down there on the right. Oh, make it wider, make it even wider. See that button down here at the right, where you see that little wheel? Looks like a wheel. There you go. Now, make it big. There you go. All right, play it. And then let it run to the next one, too. Turn it up. Can't hear it.
No sound.
...the poor treatment of Jamaica High School, and it represented our fight against the elected officials who wanted to close it. I spoke on behalf of the students, and I talked about the unequal treatment of Jamaica High School compared to other schools in the building and elsewhere. We received the bare minimum of supplies, very limited resources, and ultimately, minimal space in a building that had once belonged entirely to us. All we needed was a level playing field and a fair chance. Jamaica High School may have been labeled a failure, but that didn't make it one. When a school is labeled as failing, it labels the students as failing too. It left us with a sense of shame and doubt, and also with a sense of unworthiness and grievance. And based on what? That our test scores aren't high enough? The test scores may reflect that lack of investment in us, but it couldn't measure the benefits derived from extracurriculars and clubs. It couldn't measure the depth of the connection between each other and our teachers. Our teachers went above and beyond, and it inspired many of us to fight for the right to be educated there. From my experience, teachers really do care, and I mean, they really, really do care. So, did Jamaica High School fail me?
My goal is to make sure everyone in Brownsville, everyone from third all the way to eighth grade, to stop state exams. It's not helping us.
This is one assessment that cannot be a reflection of what our students have done throughout the entire school year. There are project-based assessments that students can give where they stand up in front of a panel, and they research and they come up with a conclusion of what they've done. We also have portfolio-based assessments.
I think portfolio work is the best thing. It gets to see the mistakes we made and everything. So, like, one part, ELA, you have a draft the student wrote, and then you give it to the teacher, the teacher makes sure it's correctly done. And then you write everything over, and you put it in the back of the paper. And the next one, you put it in your portfolio, and the state can see, okay, she made a couple mistakes, now we'll see what she's struggling on or what she need help in in the future.
No sound, Admir. Lou, can you ask Admir what's going on?
Can you hear anything, Dr. Cash, or not?
No, could you?
Yes, we could.
Oh, good. All right, as long as you all heard all that.
I can't, I can't hear it.
I don't hear it.
Yeah, none, no, no one can hear it.
I heard nothing.
But you just start with that last one and see if you can fix that last one, and then we can move on.
Okay. Admir's working on it.
Okay. There you go. No, no, nothing.
Nothing.
The microphone, the microphone, that's the base.
Yeah, the.
That's how we did it last time, it worked. Did the first video work or not?
I don't know. Could everyone hear the first?
Yeah, the first video worked, the second video cut out in about 20 seconds.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right. Admir says he knows what to do.
All right.
Let's see if it works now.
We need to hear this truth loud and clear.
Larry. That's right. Oh, and it's coming from a babe. Come on, babies, no, we can't. We'll try one more time, and if not, we'll move on.
Okay.
There, that might be it.
Can you hear now?
I hear them. Turn it up.
Can we turn it up?
You see what our teachers go through?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the thing, the A B course, the B.
This is one assessment that cannot be a reflection of what our students have done throughout the entire school year.
But not a big thing.
Yep. We can hear now.
We also have portfolio-based assessments.
I think portfolio work is the best thing. It gets to see the mistakes. It gets to see the mistakes we made and everything. So like, one part, ELA, you have a draft the student wrote and then you give it to the teacher, the teacher make sure it's correctly done. And then you write everything over and you put it in the back of the paper. And the next one, you put it in your portfolio and the state can see, okay, she made a couple mistakes, now we'll see what she's struggling on or what she need help in in the future. A lot of students like to go over with their teacher, make sure they have every step right on a state exam, we cannot do that.
One of our English language learners decided that she wanted to share that she's opting out of the exam. And another student asked the question, "Why are you opting out?" That's when all the questions started and the students started researching and decided, "If we have an option, we need to know about it." That led to them actually protesting. They went around the neighborhoods, other schools, and they started protesting there. In Brownsville, there is a lack of information. There is an inequity in the dissemination of information. When our parents are informed, they are able to make decisions that are best for their children. So it starts now, it starts today, and I'm glad that our students have the voice.
So what I'm learning to get everyone in my community, Brownsville, to opt out is to keep protesting.
We have to do better. We must do better. We must, and we must decide how we're gonna really, truly assess our students so that we get a holistic picture of how well they're doing.
My favorite line is, "Show them who you are."
All right. We can go home after that one. Now listen, Admire, turn that, turn that off. And let's go back now to Dr. Fatima Morell, who will lead us off, and Toya Wilson, Ms. Toya Wilson. Two presenters extraordinaire who really, really know this work and have done deep research on it. Toya having run a school for Young Women Leadership Academy in Rochester. Colleagues, I turn it over to you.
Thank you. Can, um, can I be heard?
I hear you. You might, you might be a little louder if possible. Admire, is that something you can control or is that something that we control from our port?
That's, that's, Dr. Morell needs to control the volume on her end, not on our end.
Okay.
Okay. Just a second. Okay, am I heard now, louder? Is that better?
Could be louder.
Okay, well, you're really loud, so I can't, I can't turn, it's as high as it goes, so I.
We can hear you, use your great Dr. Morell voice and we'll be fine.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, and thank you for those awesome videos as a segue. Greetings, esteemed Board of Education, Madam Chair, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, President Petrucci, esteemed board members. Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity, my colleague, Ms. Wilson and I, to present to you an introduction to single gender schools.
We are excited about this work. I just want to point out that we will be the first, Buffalo Public Schools will be the first, to open public, single gender schools in Western New York. Yes, this will help us continue to compete and go out there and give our students the best options for their secondary education.
Thank you. Admire, next slide. And so what exactly is the purpose of single gender schools? Well, it's been a long time coming as we have been in conversations with Dr. Cash for the last, I would say, at least three years. And it really is now becoming to a point where we can actually implement our schools based on a perfect storm of a number of things coming together. The will by many in our community, in our superintendent, and also with the strategic funding from the ESAR funds, we're able to realize the goal of presenting to our district single gender schools. And so, a key purpose is really to challenge historic racial and gender-based inequalities. And so here we are centering gender-based identities of male and female and particularly those who have come from historically marginalized communities of color, who may not have had their histories in their culture as well as their gender identity celebrated and validated in our schools. And so, as we think about creating an intellectually and physically safe learning environment, we are thinking about those pedagogical practices, which includes those historical narratives where our students see them in the curriculum, but also allowing them to have the self-esteem and confidence to have access and opportunity to advanced coursework, to actually have a can-do philosophy around being able to achieve at ever higher levels. And so we position student voice and we position that voice as being validated in our classrooms and in our content areas. And we know that also, single gender schools, as Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown mentioned, it has a host of, of, it has a host of elements and attributes that allow our students to be successful. For example, it deters negative, this, negative behaviors and decreases disciplinary infractions. It limits learning distractions and it also allows our young women and our young men to engage in academic risk-taking. That includes, once again, taking advantage of opportunities that they normally would not in the presence of the opposite sex. But also, they don't have to have showing off and impress, you know, behaviors to impress because that gender is not good. I, I'm, something is really distracting, like a noise, I can barely hear myself, I feel like I have to scream.
If everyone can mute, if you're not speaking, thank you.
Thank you. And so, in so doing, we are raising the competence and self-esteem levels of our scholars and we're creating an opportunity for them to develop positive self-identity and self, and self-concepts. So, um, when we see our students accessing ever higher levels of advanced coursework and experiences that they normally would not advance, we also normally would not take advantage of, we also see them being leaders of their own learning. So in a lot of the implementation phase of this, as we're planning, we're thinking about the work of Christopher M. D., where students take leadership of the learning processes and strategies that suit them best in the classroom. And with appropriate guidance, they're able to narrate their own experiences and content areas, and we see a high level of social, emotional support going into that as well. Ms. Wilson?
Continuing on, you'll see young women and young men. In the fabric of these schools, you'll see this embedded throughout everything that's happening with these, with these schools, and you'll see it evident in multiple ways as we share examples with you tonight. Improving academic outcomes for scholars and educating the whole being.
Do we need a next slide? Do we need a next slide?
We're on the same, we're on the same slide.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on the last bullet. So we want to improve academic outcomes for scholars and educate the whole being of boys and girls. So this work focuses on high expectations, rigor, and social, emotional supports that are intricate elements of both single gender models. Next slide, please. So of course, we want to share that there's a significant amount of research that supports both single gender models, and here are just a few. Boys and girls in single gender models are more likely to behave better and find learning more enjoyable and curriculum more relevant. This comes from 2000, the year 2000, and there's evidence that this model supports a reduction of negative behaviors that impacts academics. Girls in single gender settings take more advanced coursework and they perform specifically, significantly higher on secondary school. Specific to girls. Girls in single gender setting take, um, girls in single gender settings are more likely to overcome stereotype threats. We know that this improves academic performance specifically and particularly in math and science. So you'll see an intense focus on STEM. And in 2008, it was found that single gender schools has a beneficial effect for boys, or excuse me, for girls, when it comes to building self-esteem. And you'll see that embedded throughout self-esteem and self-concept of their abilities, of their abilities, leading the girls to take more advanced coursework and develop a, a significant identity of themselves. Dr. Morell?
Thank you. Again, there is a wealth of research that specifically speaks to the beneficial effects of building self-esteem and positive self-identity concepts, leading to girls and boys taking more advanced coursework and engaging in extracurricular activities that they otherwise would not do in a mixed learning environment. As we see from the Cambridge study, while literacy development is deemed in many school cultures as a feminine trait or attribute in which young men shy away from, in all male schools, young men were found to have an elevated interest in literacy and an increased success as skilled readers, writers, speakers, and analytical thinkers as related to literature. Additionally, we can see the outcomes of academic excellence in the entire Eagle Male Academy Network as well as the Chicago Urban Prep Network. However, the Eagle Academy at Staten Island is particularly noteworthy as it has a 54% special education rate while graduating 100% of its males. And so it's not about doing well with kids who will do well with or without us. It's actually about doing really well in a space where those who may have struggled academically in the past, academically or socially, emotionally, are also able to excel and do well in our school environments post-high school. Next slide.
Introducing the Shirley Chisholm School of Leadership for Young Women. How exciting is that? Why name the school after Shirley Chisholm? Well, US Congresswoman Shirley Chisholm was the first African-American woman to serve in the House of Representatives, and she has ties right here in Buffalo. In 1972, she became the first African-American and the first woman to run for the President of the United States. She settled here in Buffalo with her husband and she's buried in Forest Lawn Cemetery. Congressman Chisholm exemplifies women in leadership. And it is believed that her journey will springboard the young women of Buffalo who we plan to attend this school to follow in her footsteps. This will be the first school named in her honor. The school will start with grades five and nine with 50 students at each grade level, and the plan is to grow out over four years to approximately 400 young women. Next slide, please. Supporting the whole girl centers around three main areas. And I'm gonna break down each and share some personal notes with my own experience of working with a young women's school. So nurture self-efficacy by supporting young women and developing their voice. Voice is a big element, you've heard it already loud and clear, it was evident in those videos, student voice is critical here. Center students' lived experience to both validate and provide real-life experiences into the focus of the school. And intentionally structured learning experience that help address stereotype threats which support, support strengthening all subject areas, particularly in math and science for girls. Going further, there are four pillars of this program that support girls' education. So here, I've supplied you with evidence of this work from young women, a young women's school, one that is very near and dear to my heart, as Dr. Cash has mentioned, the Young Women's College Prep of Rochester. The school here shows, there are different elements here that we will point out that links to each of the four pillars. In leadership, here you see the young women taking the lead on presenting to the school and the community. There were several opportunities for our young girls to step into opportunities like this. There was leadership opportunities embedded in everything we did. Health and wellness, here you see girls from an advisory group, which is a critical component of the school. These are small groups who meet every day that incorporate academic counseling, social, emotional supports, leadership development, and strong, strong relationships among the entire group. This particular group of girls had identified a need in the community, they took on the leadership of planning how to support that need, and they were out in the community on the day of this culminating event, our Day of Caring. This particular girls were, were taken on the role of big sisters at one of our local elementary schools. College access, here you see the girls participating in an event during their junior year that they worked, they worked up to from their seventh grade year. This school was a seven through 12. They intensely researched colleges and careers through their advisory work, multiple visits to colleges each year, and recruiter connections. Over the years, they created a portfolio of work, which included transcripts, college application components, and their resume. They came in that day and they interviewed with recruiters and many of them with the recruiter of their top choice. Imagine that, the recruiter of their top choice school they're meeting with. We had nearly 50 recruiters who had attended and connections were made with actual recruiters and, as you can imagine, this supported college acceptance opportunities and financial aid. For example, one young lady interviewed with Alfred University, she was in an AP class that year, she was, she was having a bit of a struggle, she applied, the recruiter remembered her, held her application until things got better for her with that AP class. And not only did she get in, but she got a scholarship. So it was those kinds of connections that were made through the college day, which is the culminating event, but many efforts that led up to that. Steem, here you see the girls participating in one of many activities that included bringing in women from the community who work in the areas of science, technology, the arts, and math. In this case, the female guests were engineers and they worked for a year on a series of events with the girls in engineering. And you'll find that the STEAM coursework is embedded throughout everything that happens at the school, it's embedded in all the college exposures as well as community guest events. Next slide, please. Continuing with the whole girl education, there are 11 practices and six competencies that we like to always unpack if we talk, as we talk about how we support education of the whole girl. We will unpack the 11 practices. Again, you see pictures off on the side and we'll talk about them. Student voice, again, earlier, we talked about how this was a critical component and you see in this diagram, it's the largest here. Because it is evident in many places and there are opportunities to develop their voice, speak their truth in a positive and focused way. Rituals and traditions, these are important and evident by the development of the school creed and work that supports the components such as leadership, positive community members, being a positive community member, and scholars. Imprint, imprint would be ways to support the young women in understanding their impact on the community, both in the school and beyond. Restorative practices, this is embedded in the day-to-day as needed and a critical component of the advisory setting, which we mentioned earlier. Attention to relationships, this connects back to advisory. This is an important, specific time that is embedded into every single day. And ongoing professional development is delivered to staff to support the success of this overall opportunity to build relationships. Connection, being connected to each other, school staff and the greater community, again going back to relationships. Connection, being connected to each other, school staff, and the greater community, again, going back to relationship. Collaboration. This is key, and it overlaps in many places. Academic rigor, having high expectations, providing supports and celebrating success. Accelerated coursework and AP classes are provided, and that is evidenced through the academic rigor that the girls receive. Cultural relevance. Again, a larger practice in this diagram because it's a major component which you would see throughout the presentation, and you'll hear about it again later in this presentation. Courage cultivation. This practice is connected to why Shirley Chisholm is important to this school. The girls work to overcome stereotype threats and build high confidence levels. Gender consciousness. Meaning that the girls work to gain an understanding of the traditional gender roles, and they work to establish how they create the new norms and how they work against those stereotype threats. So here, again, you see more pictures of the young women from Young Women's College Prep exemplifying the 11 practices. Next slide, please. The six competencies. Leadership, self-advocacy, identity, self-regard, academic preparedness, and the growth mindset. They're all attainable, uh, with the emphasis that is placed on the 11 practices that we just unpacked, which leads me to my all-time favorite quote. It comes from an all-time, an unknown author, and it is, "A strong woman is one who can build a strong foundation with the bricks that I've thrown at her." Here in these pictures, you see young women building that foundation. Each picture tells a different story, but I need you to just know that the girls' picture here had many bricks being thrown at them, yet here they stand in these pictures showing that strong foundation that they were working on. Next picture, there, excuse me, next slide. So the model we have explored to support the Shirley Chisholm School of Leadership for Young Women is the Young Women's Leadership Network Schools with four twelves. Here you see an overview. These schools are traditional public schools in New York City, and there's a network which includes both traditional public schools and charter schools across the country from Rochester, Baltimore, uh, Las Vegas, Los Angeles, and, and several in Texas. These schools average 95% graduation rates with a number of the schools being right at 100% and 100% accepted into college with almost over 30 years of experience. We visited schools in New York City, um, Dr. Morel and I, we took a team to visit schools, and we, we looked at the girl's schools as well as the boy's schools. So we visited Eagle Academy as well as twill schools. And we asked the students, um, one big question before we wrapped up each session. We wanted to know what did they think was most important for us to make sure we focused on as we were looking to bring schools, single-gender schools, to Buffalo? And they said overwhelmingly, "Student voice, student voice, student voice." You see it's a major component of the overall programming, and that was evident in their response. They said students should feel connected to each other and to staff. Again, the relationship model key. These are all things that are really critical that, as Dr. Cash mentioned earlier, don't show up on a New York State assessment, but really important skills that are needed for our students to transition onto the next level and be, be successful. They said we should collaborate. So the Eagles from Eagle Academy said they work with twelves, and that we should consider doing the same because there's some elements that cross over into both models. And as you see, we're already starting that as we co-present tonight on the schools. And opportunities for big sister, little sister connections. So you saw that as evidence in YWCP. The, and, and that's, that's part of the model and the reason why there's ninth graders and fifth graders, because now we can have that big sister, little sister model all the way through from the first start of the school. Next slide.
Thank you. It is with great pride, honor, and jubilation that we have the opportunity to imprint upon the scholars in the Buffalo Public Schools the legacy of oratorical greatness, intellectual genius, and promise of our former president Barack Obama by naming the Male Academy in his likeness, in, in the likeness of his great attributes, playing on his multicultural background, creating a culture of inclusion within our school walls. We expect nothing less than excellence at this dynamic new male leadership academy in the Buffalo Public Schools. And so a strong focus on leadership and oratory skills through robust literacy development opportunities, including public speaking, debate, theater, and the arts, will be central to the Barack Obama Leadership Academy. As the first African-American president in the history of our country, there are so many key learning elements on which our scholars are able to emulate and model after as they pursue their personal life goals as successful young men uncovering their infinite intellectual potential as they are guided to walk in the steps in the light of our former president Barack Obama. The Barack Obama Leadership Academy, uh, will be based upon the current My Brothers Keeper National Milestones established by our former president and are currently implemented in our seventh and eighth grade middle school model. There will be a focus on STEAM opportunities locally and nationally in preparation for college and careers. And of course, the successful development of social-emotional competencies is one of the My Brothers Keeper National Milestones, and it will serve as an underpinning of the entire Male Academy curriculum and extracurriculum, extracurricular instructional programming as we teach and cultivate our young men who have, by the time they reach us in seventh grade, unfortunately, may have experiences of being devalued as young men of color and given their natural developmental needs. It is paramount that we ensure our young men are learning how to self-manage, how to self-regulate, and how to address adversity in a manner that forwards their personal progress towards their own success, while also being able to demonstrate emotions, yes, even crying, in a nurturing environment that allows boys to be boys. Next slide. It has been an honor, an extreme honor, to develop and implement the middle school Male Academy for the last four and a half years here in the Buffalo Public Schools. We have seen over the years how some boys and young men in our traditional educational settings struggle in the environment, resulting in high levels of suspensions and, and low, and, and, and low attendance rates. And we have seen how these very same young men have through the nurturing of the MBK program and focusing on their needs and their histories have allowed them to flourish, and we have seen decreases in suspensions and improved attendance and overall joy with our young men. And therefore, we see more time on task over the years in the classroom, which pays off with academic success. And many scholars have come back to the program. They have come back to tell us, "What a great impact you all had on me when I was a seventh grader. I'm a senior now. I'm graduating." And the social and, and intellectual growth that we have realized has really been, uh, just unparalleled when we talk about, um, boys' efficacy, boys' understanding of who they are as young men, and what it means, and, and what are pathways and goals to success. We have not had parallel programs, and that's why it was important that we created the Little Sister, the Big Sister/Little Sister Dialogues Program because we saw that working so well for our young men, want to, want to replicate that. We know President Obama initiated MBK to provide mentors and STEAM opportunities, and students involved in this program are specifically able to discuss issues related to Black and Brown males while learning about leadership development. So you see a trifecta of STEAM learning opportunities, Black and Brown male voice, and other male voices, and leadership learning and development. We have served as a state exemplary model already. Our program's curriculum, resources, and structure have, have been used statewide to bolster the implementation of other MBK programs in our state. And parents and caregivers in this community for a multitude of years have not only supported the program, but have pushed wholeheartedly for a Male Academy High School because they so enjoy what they saw at the middle school level with their own sons. They would say to us, "He's graduating. He's going to high school. What's next?" And now I would like to be able to turn to parent caregiver and say, "We have a high school to continue to replicate but expand, and like Dr. Cash said, and widen the boat of these experiences for our young men." And I guarantee you, if we widen our boat with these here extraordinary learning experiences and opportunities for our young men and our young women, we wouldn't have to worry about a test score. It will take care of itself. Next slide. And so the tenants of the school, really expanding upon that middle school Male Academy, I think all of you have been to the village at one time or another, but, uh, and increasing that village to include more guest speakers, to include more opportunities for, for student voice, for male voice, to increase more opportunities for brotherhood bonding. One of the things we noted at the Eagle Academies in New York City was there are many, many opportunities for the young men to bond as brothers. It was my brother this and my brother that, and that was because there were rituals. There were rituals about everything that they did. And those rituals said to them, "You are special. You are important. We value you, and you're, you're, you're going to work hard." So we saw, heard, and saw everything from tie ceremonies, from moving up ceremonies to the next grad level, to, uh, the next, uh, grade level that became an entire ordeal, to, uh, their turkey, their, their, their football, uh, um, competitions amongst the network schools and their Turkey Bowl, uh, competitions. But, you know, more importantly, um, seeing our young men, um, value the, you know, friendly competition and, um, their creed and their beliefs and saying those things every day because we know that when you say something every day, it becomes how you think, and then it becomes a habit and becomes who you are. And so those rituals are dynamic. We see them in private schools like St. Joe's and Canisius, and we want to say we, we can create a, a, a better experience than those, those, those private high schools. We want to compete with them. We want to compete with the best because the, this is going to be the best opportunity, but we can't do it without parents and family. Right? So part of our model is to ensure that parents are engaged, that parents are not just coming in when there is a parent night, but there will be opportunities to engage our parents so that they are partners and not just a cursory, uh, person on the side, um, for the education of our young men because we know that when parents are partners, all of us achieve. And so academic rigor must be there, but also the supports have to also be there. So when we talk about academic rigor and supports, we're talking about extended learning time. We're talking about opportunities for intervention and acceleration. All of those things need to be there. It will be a grade seven to 12 college preparatory program. We will start with about 57th graders and 59th graders, and we'll build our program up until we meet a 407th to 12th grade student body. In addition, mentoring and internships will be commonplace at the school as well as advisories. Leadership development is a hallmark and a cornerstone where young people get to intern with high-profile men in our communities. They be, are able to create brotherhood bonds and networks with, uh, mentors at the college level and expanding upon My Brothers Keepers Fellows Program and above. Service community. And a critical piece is our summer bridge program to ensure that our young, A, that we know where they are academically so that we can provide the right supports, so that parents can meet us and feel comfortable with the school program, with the teachers, with the administrators. If, if we could please mute with the teachers and the administrators, and of course, you can't have a Male Academy without a strong athletics and extracurricular program. And when we talk about extracurriculars, we're not just simply speaking about art and music. We're talking about art. We're talking about music. We're talking about dance. We're talking about theater. We're talking about lacrosse. You know, what, the multitude of things that our scholars would be wanting to engage in. And they love this anime, and we have to get on board with that and figure out how we put mathematics in that program because they love it. And then raising scholar voice continually, letting them, you know, as M. Den said, be leaders of their own learning, have voice in the learning process, and have teachers that are trained well enough to understand that process. And then uniforms. Uniforms that say, "We are one. You don't have to worry about what you look like. You don't have to worry about competing with the best brand of this and the best brand of that because we are all one. We're brothers, and they, and we got really cool uniforms that we're going to wear them and be recognized in the community. And we're going to learn what, what a tie looks like. We're going to have tie ceremonies, and we're going to learn how to tie them and be comfortable with those." Next slide, please. And so the benefits of successful Male Academies, of course, is breaking down those gender stereotypes, those negative stereotypes about males of color especially. And we know that historically, there has been a, uh, a degradation of the intellectual, uh, intellectual, um, capacity of males of color, particularly through the years. And so we want to break down those stereotypes to say, "You are great. You are excellent, and you will go to college, and you will succeed," and college isn't an option. It's not an option. This is what, this is a college preparatory school, and there needs to be structures and practices which tailor instruction specifically to meeting boys' learning styles and needs. So a question I will ask any teacher who wants to teach in this school is not, not are you just a good teacher, but are you passionate about teaching boys? And what does teaching boys look like? For you. Right? Because there are going to be some tough days. And, and, and how do you have that passion and that care, caring and that nurturing to really cultivate the genius of our boys? It's not just about teaching. And then boys have the ability to discuss topics and issues that specifically impact males, and the curriculum centers their voices like we're trying to do at the elementary level. Having that curriculum that really puts the voice of males of color where they see themselves in literature as a protagonist that's doing well, or they see in nonfiction pieces where the protagonist has achieved and triumphed over adversity, or in fiction pieces where the protagonist is able to also overcome some kind of triumph, and they can say, "And I too can do that. And I can apply myself in that way." And that serves as an exemplar. Next slide. And so in creating developmentally appropriate, appropriate structures for, for, uh, young men, you have to start thinking, "How do I create brotherhood bonding?" And brotherhood bonding comes in a number of ways, and we saw in, um, in our Eagle Academy School, there was healthy competitive structures, right? So in the houses for each, so for example, I would have, you know, one house is the M. Hotep House, and another house is the Thurgood Marshall House, and another house is the Malcolm X House. And in my house, we, we completed more homework assignments in the month of January, so we're getting period Tuckman bucks to go spend. Right? In my house, we had a 98% attendance rate. We beat the M. Hotep House. We beat the, uh, Thurgood Marshall House. We the Malcolm X House, and we're going to, uh, the Michigan Street Corridor. Right? Because we're doing, so that kind of brotherhood bonding, working together, because you're going to say to your brother, "Man, you better do that homework because we, I'm going to, I'm going on that field trip." So it creates accountability amongst them, but also too, making sure that's healthy. And then doing that social-emotional wellness practices. So in our village, that's not only where social-emotional wellness is raised and elevated, but also in the classroom spaces. We expect, we, we expect restorative circles. We expect, um, opportunities to discuss the community, current events, what's going on around me that impacts me and my life. Right? But also too, steady skills development should be a course in the, in the course of the day. And, uh, we also know that our young men, um, they need to study, uh, their core content. Subjects should come, if we can, before lunch so that those encore subjects will come after lunch because we know that they learn better earlier in the morning, and that after lunch they get lethargic and they get tuned off. So maybe you want to have some of those other enriching experiences like So maybe you want to have some of those other enriching experiences like debate and um, their extra athletics or what other ever other encore subject. But also outlets for male behaviors, right? So we know males are a little bit more aggressive. So let's call it what it is. They have more aggressions, they have testosterone that's going wild. So how do we cultivate and harness that rather than punishing it and criminalizing it, right? So a lot of that aggression needs to be, you know, on the football field like we saw with the Bennett uh, High School Team going to a New York State Championship. That's how their that's how their their developmentally appropriate aggressions are being harnessed in their behavior, harnessed in their behaviors. Uniforms and positive image branding. The school will need to be uh, just laden with the the branding of Barack Obama, the uniforms, the crests, the tie. The young men need to feel special about wearing a uniform. And so all of those things will need to be laid out. Next slide. And we talked a little bit earlier about culturally responsive practices and curriculum. But we plan to continue to, of course, our standard curriculum. But we must also make sure that it is a diversified curriculum that speaks and attends to the uh, to males of color, to males in general, then males of color. And it must also uh, speak to women in the girls' schools, right? It needs to speak to raising and edifying voices of girls as well. And they need opportunities to see themselves, and they need, as you saw in that video, the social justice coordinator. And those kids were engaged in emancipatory practices around social justice and social activism. That is the kind of learning, key learning pieces that belong in an emancipation emancipatory curriculum that signals liberation for our young people. Next slide. Toya.
So the College Access Initiative. This is an element that as as Dr. Morel mentioned, there are some elements that you will see evident in both models. This is one of those that you will see in in both models, um, similar to the culturally responsive um, curriculum. This is a comprehensive and well-rounded education structure um, with a focus on academics, service, enrichment, monitoring, mentoring, and extracurricular activities along with internships that en- ensure that young women and young men at these schools transition from high school, ready to meet the demands of college and career, and achieve their personal and professional goals. So to accomplish this, there would be a dedicated College Access Counselor that would be there to support the students along with their school counselors. Uh, this staff would work to prepare scholars to transition from high school, ready to meet the demands, as we mentioned before, that they personally set out to reach. Along with staff trainings, which include things such as letters of recommendation, like how to write those. And they will provide a high level of parent engagement with the College Access Process. As mentioned earlier, sometimes beyond the academics is the behaviors and understanding the environment of transitioning onto college. Also, this parent connection, when it's not fully amplified, becomes a problem and and also hinders that transition. So we want to make sure that that is done at a really high level and parent engagement is all throughout both programs. And this will support college tours at each grade level with partnerships that lead to high levels of college enrollment and persistence for young women and young men. Developing a college-going mindset through multiple opportunities for college interactions or ca- campus interactions and building relationships with college recruiters. Because remember, it's those relationships that will matter for our kids as they transition onto the next level. Um, and those recruiters, those connections become really important, and they matter. And they really do come back to help our students with that with that um, difficult transition. Next slide, please.
And so finally, um, next steps, thank you, Toya. So finally, next steps for our single gender schools. Uh, Ms. Wilson and I are knee deep in this right now. And um, we are working collaboratively to ensure success of both programs. And so we are partnering at this time with the Young Women's Leadership Network and the Eagle Academy Foundation for guidance and support. And we are next going to create advisory boards from the community to also be a whisper in our ear to 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 let us know what's going and and what their thinking is and to inform our thinking, inform our practice around development of these schools. So we're looking at uh, you know, high uh, passionate community members who want to do that. And then we have to take this to the community, and we will be taking that to the community with Dr. Cash and um, with the forum, with forums. And then um, we will need to be engaged in administrator and teacher selection and training as soon as possible. And we're waiting on our esteemed leader, Dr. Cash, is uh, selecting a location sites. And then student recruitment and the high schools ahead process and fears with Dr. Williams. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Colleagues, that was exceptional. So proud of you. Dr. Kathy Evans Brown.
Oh, yes. Uh, those of you, Dr. Morel and the Toya Wilson, did a phenomenal job in doing a presentation for both of those academies, the single gender schools. Uh, you did a lot of interviews, passions. Your research was on point, provided examples of schools um, that we visited in New York City. I've heard about uh, a couple of those, and they're awesome. So I'm really excited that uh, the district is bringing something similar to this district. So with that, if you have any questions all around and ask each of you for your insights and for comments or questions. I'm gonna start with Board Member Sharon Hoffman, Kelvin Hoffman.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm excited always about new schools coming into our district. Uh, I am pleased that you guys are doing this work. My only concerns I have, and I put it in an email out to the entire district, uh, to the cabinet, is uh, the work that uh, we need, I need to see. The board deserves to see a plan for our existing schools and the issues that they are also encountering before we step out into new territory. And these issues have been out there for a while. So I'm looking forward to finding out what the solutions are going to be for our uh, high schools uh, that we currently have. And then to move forward to open up new schools after those needs have been met is my priority. And I think that's only fair, that we fix what we have currently in place and so that you, uh, the board is aware. Uh, various principals have approached me with their concerns in regards to this um, about their their existing needs being met. So not to take away from what you're doing here. Uh, certainly, we need as many options as possible. I can feel your enthusiasm, but I also need to make sure that we do the maintenance on the uh, existing schools before we move forward. That's my only uh, caveat with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one other thing, I have one other question. So my concern with the, when I look at equity, when I talk, you talk about the gender. Yes, we've got a male school, we've got a female school. But I did not hear the emphasis placed on science, technology, engineering and math in the male academy, as I heard with the female academy. And I want to make sure that as we develop this, that we make sure that the same emphasis that are available for both schools are available. Uh, we've got a strong emphasis with reference with sports in regards to our male academy. I want to make sure that the same emphasis are put in place for our girls as well because they are very competitive as well. But that's the type of stuff that I will be looking for uh, at to make sure that we don't uh, give girls uh, uh, cups with uh, little dainty uh, flowers on it and and not make sure that they're able to uh, uh, run a track meet or knock down a football player in the process, okay? So I just want to be clear with that, that those are the type of gender things that I'm very uh, cognizant of. And I want to make sure that all needs are met with our students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. Well. I'll say what I need to say later. Okay, Karen Heard, woman with Karen Heard.
Yes, yes. Um, uh, thank you, um, Ms. Wilson and 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 Dr. Morel for such a a great, great presentation tonight and something that um, our community and my ears wanted to hear for a long time. We've been um, talking about the male academy and the female academy um, since um, I've been on the board. And I'm and I've been at Dr. Cash's ear every now and then asking where we're at with this. And I'm so happy to see all the work and good knowing you. And also all of the research that you guys are doing to make sure that uh, we can bat all our i's and cross out our t's about um, creating a successful program that's gonna be um, utilized for our kids in in our district. And um, I have a couple of questions because I know that um, yeah, doing this program, you know, uh, we have uh, um, you talked about restorative practices and some in some in your language and also structure and confidence within the girls and the boys, you know, about different different aspects and and mental awareness that happens. We know that uh, our boys and our girls, they mature at different times. And they um, and they also um, um, you know, build their confidence at at different times in their lives, you know, and and be very excited about what they can do. Um, um, I I don't know if I'm asking this too soon, but my questions would be, how can our children enter into the program? And how would the selection be? A child coming from a a already existing school and wants to go to this program? Is it, how many kids would be allowed into the program? What the class sizes will are projected to be? Um, I don't know i- if if I'm putting the cart before the horse, but um, is these some of the questions we can answer now or just give enlightenment to? Uh, because I'm sure our our parents would want our kids and their children to be, you know, selected for a program like this. Um, and and what the criteria is gonna be, is it gonna be a testing format or 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 just gonna be a selection or maybe even a a draft or a lottery?
Yes. So I'll start with the girls.
Let me just say this, uh, colleagues. So thank you for that question, Terrence, because it's a really important one. And what what uh, Dr. Morel and Ms. Wilson found in their travels was they didn't really want, the the more successful school that they visited, we didn't want it to be about a criteria, another criterion school, so sort of exclusive. The schools they visited were actually opposite of that. They took all the students, and that's what's so impressive about it. So colleagues, if you say more about about that being our approach as well here, I think you can begin to answer uh, Mr. Heard's question. We don't have all the details. You saw on one of those slides, that's what we're working on. But certainly, this overall approach, I think the community should hear.
Thank you, we got fifty-six percent. Uh, five, if you'd like.
Yeah, so um, thank you, Dr. Cash. So um, definitely, we we really want this to be a choice um, for any family who's choosing the single gender model. So there is not a cri, these are not criterion schools. They won't, there won't be a test to get in. It's just simply selecting that you like these schools and um, you're agreeing to the model. Um, the model does include uniforms. I think that was noticeable in both um, both schools. Um, and we have rules or excuse me, ways to support that for our families. Um, but then there's also, um, you know, when you think about the, I I talked about the grow out at the with the girls at grades five and grade nine, right? There will be fifty students coming in. So that would be two to three sections, depending on how that would break up for each grade level. So you're talking about between eighteen and twenty-five um, in class at at fifth grade and the same thing um, at uh, ninth grade. Um, so that model will continue to grow out until you reach five through twelve. And the reason why five, fifth grade was selected for the girls is because it's a natural break here in Buffalo. Um, and so families who who are looking for a new home at the end of fourth grade, um, it's it's an it's another option for them. Um, but then also, uh, we wanted to engage the girls a little bit earlier. And we needed to make sure that we had our middle school grades also engaged because that's a critical component of developing that college-going culture. You really have to start earlier than ninth grade. Um, and so that's a lot of the work we're doing right now with our schools across across um, the um, Buffalo s- uh, school district. Um, and we're working to do that, starting with our K, our our K eights. But now we're looking at a school that would go five through twelve. I hope that makes sense.
Yes, it it really does. But if we have um, two hundred applicants, how would that selection go? Um, um, is is there, is there a way how how to uh, pull fifty children? Or it it will just be by uh, by chance? I'm not sure.
It would go. It would go through that. Go ahead, Dr. Morel. Go ahead, Dr. Morel.
Colleagues, colleagues, I wouldn't get caught up in that today.
Okay.
Let's uh, think about the question. Thank uh, Board Member Heard for the question. And then take it under consideration and advisement, okay? That's all we can do tonight, but thank you for that. That's it.
Okay, good. Thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Heard. Did you have anything else, Dr. Morel, on that issue?
No, I think Dr. Cash spoke for us now.
Okay. So I I like the slide that indicated that Eagle Academy of Staten Island maintains a fifty-four percent special way at race while achieving a hundred percent rate. That is impressive. And so it looks like that is definitely one of the criteria that you want to keep, you know, for um, getting our young people into those gender, um, gender schools. Um, next we have, uh, Day Hope, you have Hope Day, you have anything if you want to comment on or question.
Jess, thank you. A very interesting presentation. I just have a couple of questions. My first question is, are we converting uh, buildings that we're already using to accommodate these schools? Or are we looking to secure new locations? Or do you not know the answer to that?
Yeah, that answer we're working on on the big board. Um, it's it's gonna be the biggest challenge around this uh, exciting project is where will these schools uh, be had and and where would they be held? So we've got six major capital improvement projects on the big board. And uh, we'll be attacking all of those simultaneously. Um, and should have at least a proposal in the next month or so. Maybe maybe two months uh, regarding this issue. But we don't have that answer right now. We're looking at existing space, um, and we're looking at possible reopening or refurbishing schools that we do have, uh, that do exist and things of that nature. So that that's that's what's under consideration now.
Is there a projected date, Dr. Cash? When when you're, you know, when we're looking to launch these new schools?
Uh, realistically, in my mind, given what I know about everything is that it likely will be the fall of twenty twenty-three. Uh, it's probably gonna be the earliest we can do this. Sometimes we launch, and I've launched things uh, over over the time in January. Sometimes January is a good launch because it's a soft launch. And that could be um, also January of twenty twenty-three. But certainly, I don't see it at this point necessarily being in in the fall. We we want to open in the fall. The late, the for colleagues are are planning toward that, but I I just don't see it at this point. We've got too many hurdles to cross uh, to get there. We're gonna try, but it's it's not likely until a year after that.
Okay. And I just have one other question. This might sound, um, you know, I I again, not knowing how uh, single gender schools are established in the context of public education. I mean, I I have, obviously, we all are familiar with this model in private schools. There are a lot of private schools that are single gender schools. Um, I'm not familiar with with uh, this model in public schools, although, you know, I understand from this presentation that there are some in in the New York City area. Um, how do we address uh, our students who are like gender fluid, gender questioning, non-binary, um, transgender, you know, all of those issues? transgender, you know, all of those issues? And I don't know if that's something to talk about tonight, but it just struck me as we were, as, you know, this presentation was being given, you know, how we're really sort of creating schools that are identifying, you know, traditional gender norms, you know, that we really, we're a public school district. So we have to take into account, you know, all of our students. And there are students that we have that don't identify or are, you know, gender fluid and all this kind of stuff. So I just wanted to bring that up as an issue. Clearly, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but I just sort of wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, let me, let me answer that, colleagues, or at least respond to it because I don't think an answer. But I think that's a great question. And I think the way Buffalo Public Schools would be on that, where our position would be, you know, we talk with the parents, of course, and the student and we, we're in the spirit of whatever the student identifies with, you know? What the student says she identifies as. And we would welcome that student. We would help that student build her voice. If she transgendered to a female, if she transgendered to a male, we'd help him build his voice. So, you know, that, that wouldn't be a thing where we go, hmm. We really would welcome and embrace the student. But certainly, it's a good question and we would make that very clear early on, that all students were welcome, but also around that whole gender identity thing. Because the one thing about gender identity, the little I know about the research is that there really should be full support for that by the family, the student, and then, of course, we then as educators will do, do everything, especially in these kinds of academies, to amplify that student's self-esteem, that student's voice, that student's sense of self and belonging and all of those things you heard in the presentation. But yeah, thank you for that. There would be no exclusion or confusion.
No, I know that, you know, that we, as a district, have, have developed policies that are, you know, empathetic to our transgender community. But I think when you're establishing a school based on gender, Dr. Cash, there are, there are students who are, you know, I guess, for lack of, like, they're, they're gender fluid, you know? They're non-binary, meaning they don't identify necessarily as one gender or the other. So if you are, you know, establishing a school based on gender, it's in a public school district, I just, I just think that it's an issue that needs to be more fully explored. And perhaps that it's been explored in these schools that are down in, and, you know, I just, again, not knowing a whole lot about this, you know, it just, it occurred to me as the presentation was, because it's so geared towards, this is how we're going to treat girls, but this is how we're going to treat boys. And, and I think that in today's society, gender is not as black and white as it's been in the past. So I just wanted to raise that issue.
That's a great issue.
Ms. Jay, in 2001, under No Child Left Behind, we were able to, we were given provisions through Title IX legislation to create these single gender schools. And that's where you'll see, it's not just in New York, they're all across the country. There are networks in Chicago, there are networks in New York, there are networks in Detroit, and so, it basically stated that if there are structures that work better for some kids, that can increase student achievement for those students, then as long as we have a comfortable site for other kids, then we can actually create these sites. So we're doing it the right way by creating both a female site and a male site. And that kind of alleviates us from the Title IX test. But, but also, when we're thinking, like Dr. Cash, when we're thinking about these gender-based schools, they, they are just that. They're gender-based schools. So if you, whatever your gender identity is, if you believe your gender identity belongs in the female school, then, then we're going to welcome and nurture that, like Dr. Cash said. If you believe you belong in a male school, we're going to welcome and nurture that. But they are, and there has been a lot of fluidity around these laws, so I do agree with you 100%, but we do, you know, we're not, we're not going to get a big lawsuit because we do have that legislation to protect us.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Jay. Okay. So thank you for that conversation. Next, we have President Petrusi.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. My questions were asked by Sharon and by Hope. They both touched on the issues that I would have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Larry Scott.
Evans-Brown, and thank you, Dr. Morrell and Ms. Wilson, for the wonderful presentation. You know, I've attended the MBK, some of the MBK events, helped organize one with Dr. Yusef Salem from the Central Park Five. And, you know, it's long been an idea to have an MBK high school. And so I'm happy to see that we're kind of moving or transitioning from just it being an idea to potentially happening in the future. So I am very impressed with the research that's been done with the proposals for both programs and look forward to seeing this transpire and to hopefully happening for both our male and female students. I also want to recognize too that I'm happy to hear that it's five to 12. It's going down to fifth grade. I think we often overlook our middle school students, not just in Buffalo, but everywhere. I feel like that's a group of students that we need to do more for. And so to hear that we're going to, we're going to start this at fifth grade, I think is also very helpful. And I think this is really, as it was mentioned by somebody, this is an opportunity for us to, again, in Buffalo, be innovative compared to the rest of Western New York and statewide as well in some ways. So thank you, and I am complete, I am in complete support of what was proposed today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Scott. Next, Dr. Anne Rivera.
Very much. As with Board President Petrusi, several of my questions were answered. I just would like to add into this. I really enjoyed the pieces about scholar voice, about college access, which is obviously a passion of mine, about, also about this idea of advisory boards for school change. Really liked the proposals. I think they're very important. I think this is an important expansion for us. I would like to find out if you have any plans to take what you've learned about some of those pieces of it and maybe implement them in other schools that maybe aren't just new or focused on single gender that we could use to move our student body forward in other ways?
Maybe in the practice development?
Yeah, let me take a crack at that, colleagues. I think that's a really good question. And what we, some of the conversation that we've had with Fatima and Toya, and then, of course, Anne and others, is that while these are single gender proposed schools, there's nothing, and I mean nothing, stopping traditional schools from applying the principles, from looking closely at the research, or even having gender-based parts of the school. For example, in a high school, I'm very familiar with research and practice that takes ninth graders, for example, and has single, single gender-based academies in the ninth grade. Because coming out of that eighth grade into high school, that is the biggest transition of all of the transitions in a pre-K to 12 public school setting. It's the eighth to the ninth. And so we've done and seen the research there. But long story short, I know these, these colleagues who presented tonight will be giving, as they learn and implement, these gender-based academies. We're going to be sharing these in our monthly meetings with principals, you know, and best practices, emerging practices, so that they can rethink and reimagine how they group students in school, how they group students in grade levels, and how they group students based on gender as well. Because this research is powerful and can work in traditional schools. Now, it's most powerful when you keep the genders separate for the reasons stated. But I don't want to, I don't want us to think that unless we do gender-based schools, we won't, the other schools have no chance to be successful as successful or to learn from the research that is, that is very prolific in this area. So that would be my response, Dr. Rivera, to your question, which is a great question. Now, Fatima and Toya, if you want to share and join in on that question as well.
Yes, absolutely. So several elements, for example, the college access model. Those are, that's a model that we're looking to bring to our students at the middle grades and expand into the high schools. So that model of a college counselor, we're looking to start that with some schools in the near future. So that is a component that we feel like and we know, we've seen the research, we've visited, actually, the co-ed schools that actually have this model and have seen the success there. That was also a part of our, our research from New York. So that's one example.
That's excellent to hear.
Well, we have approximately nine programs. We have the MBK Male Academy, the MBK Fellows, the Big Sister, Little Sister Dialogues Program, Global Scholars. We have the, now the Lorna C. Hill Speaking Contest. We have approximately seven to nine instructional programs that focus on racist scholar voice, STEM STEAM opportunities, project-based learning, mentoring, social emotional wellness support, cross-cultural collaboration, critical thinking. So if you take all of those programs and, you know, you have a good crop of about 500 to 600 kids in our district right now that engage in these programs, weekly and daily. Now, how do we transfer some of these high-leverage learning opportunities and skills to the schools? That is a really good question. That's a really great question and it's something that I'm looking forward to working on even more, as Dr. Cash said, as we learn more. As we learn more about the processes and the structures and the programs and how they are effective, then we can, you know, work collaboratively with our colleagues and our superintendents to say, hey, this could work well at this school, this might work well at that school. But it's not like none of this exists anywhere right now because we have a myriad of programs that are doing, especially the scholar, the scholar voice component. We have a myriad of programs that are doing that. But we do have to improve. I agree.
And it's mostly about scalability. I think what you're doing with scholarly voice is wonderful. I think it's really important, as you point out, you're increasing your access. What's interesting to me is that you're scaling part of it into gender-based academies and how, and I just wanted to gauge what the will was, to take that and think, okay, so how do we make this bigger? How do we increase this access? How do we continue to move the work forward? Because as all of you have pointed out, there are pieces of this that can be working within schools. When Dr. Cash was speaking about these models within traditional schools, I immediately started thinking, being an interest in response intervention, right? So if you have a student struggling, you have a cohort of students who are struggling, they might have access to some of this as well. I really appreciate your answers. I appreciate the work you've done on this. Thank you very much for your, just the thoughtful presentation, the care that you put this together with.
Thank you, Daniel Beer. We're going to get better. We're going to scale. We're going to go to scale. Thank you.
And colleagues, just one more element that Toya knows about, that we have already begun to contract. And Toya, I think they're going to do it for free. What I heard was they were going to do it for free because the Young Women's Leadership Academy National Network is going to partner with us, right? And they're going to provide this college-going counselor. There's a dedicated counselor that's a really important part of this work that is, we're going to use our ESSR funds. It goes to the conversation that we've had tonight. But we don't need to do it. They're going to pay for it. They're so excited about us doing it. But that role, that role is really important, Toya. Could you say a little more about that role and how we're going to scale that role? Because many of our, many of our high school counselors, they do have an unrealistic load, especially for the-
Ah, yes.
Paulette, would you stop that? And especially for the, especially for the high school, when you say you have 450 students to one, what can you get done with 450 as a load? I remember in Memphis, we had 750 to one and was just undoable. So this, this dedicated role, if you could say more about it, I think it's a game changer. I think it's a game changer for our kids. And we're going to have that in all high schools. Now, go ahead. Toya.
So the College Bound Initiative is what Dr. Cash is referring to. And it's not free completely. They're going to pay for a large portion of it. So it's going to feel like it's almost, it's pretty close to being free because they, they have funding that they're able to support most of it. And this will be, it is a cornerstone of the Young Women's Leadership Network schools, but it does play out in other schools in New York City. We, we visited a couple of co-ed schools. And then there was one of the, one of the boys' schools, Eagle Academy, who had the same initiative in their school. They have a model that's similar, but then they actually had the College Bound Initiative in their school. And that is a dedicated counselor, as described in the, in the one slide. And that supports, it does, they don't come in and take the place of the school counselor. They work in concert with the school counselor and all of the staff. So they become an intricate member of the, of the staff that's focused only on creating a college-going culture. So there's two levels that we are looking to partake in for Buffalo. There's the level of these, of these college-bound initiative counselors actually being in the school and doing the work, and we're rolling that out over a period of time. And then there's another level that it's, it's all about building capacity. So it's district level and school level supports that support all the way down to grade six. So you keep hearing me say we're going to be working on the middle grades. So it's that, building that college-going culture, starting at grade six and working our way through to make sure that we have those touchpoints prior to ninth grade. And so there's, there's a series of four years that they work with us to help us build the capacity to do that work and support the things that we already have in place, like EOS, you know, our initiative to increase AP classes at our, at our schools. Like, there's a number of initiatives that we already have, our work would say yes. This would help us continue to bridge, bridge the gap between those different initiatives into one, one place where this one person in each school is supporting that, but then also building the capacity district-wide.
Now, Paulette, there you go. You can now chime in.
I didn't know my, I didn't know my mic was open, Dr. Cash. I was just enthused with that.
It's all good.
Okay. Well, everybody knows that the My Brothers Keeper program has been like one of my hearts, totally supportive and just enthusiastic about, about your work, Dr. Morrell. But I have a question on that with the My Brothers Keeper. The whole emphasis was the children who were in danger of falling out, the kids like my nephew, who God knows doesn't have a father figure and I didn't know what I was going to do to save them. I mean, the criteria for that school was taking the most needy kids. And like that one example you gave, 4% of the children are special ed. So I'm just a little bit like parents saying, well, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're saving our kids who we're going to lose. You're taking the worst, the neediest, the brightest maybe, but just the kids who are in danger. And I don't want to see that, you know, we don't keep that, that emphasis in there. Because that, that, that was important to me, that, you know, your My Brothers Keeper program is taking those kids. And then when you said the high school, I'm like, all right, go ahead. We're going to take them all the way-
And then when you said the high school, I'm like, all right, go ahead. We're gonna take them all the way in, you know? So remember, try to see if we can't throw out the baby thing. That emphasis is important. I know it should be kind of open, anybody and everybody. But we're saving the boys who we're gonna lose, you know, our brightest, who don't because of our challenge, because they didn't have mentors, because you reached out and got role models for them. That's part of the success. That's why I love your program. When they talk about taking the things that work and help these urban males, the community partnership, the role models, the men, the examples. That's something I think if we could take it broader to all schools, you know, we'd reach more than fifty or a hundred. We'd make a difference significantly. That's one of the things I really think that come from your program that we need to emulate.
Yes.
I'm really proud of your book, Pushed Out, where you stress about how our young girls are sexualized and made as, looked as women because we're, you know, we're voluptuous. What can I say? But we're still girls. We're the girls, okay? So, you know, that part is why I was really happy you were gonna get a all-girls school and help those girls. Because if it's an all-girls school, they'll avoid some of that. They will get their self-esteem to be able to combat that and stand up for themselves. So I like the all-girls school. I think that's just important. I hope that you will still, if you have to do fifty-fifty, you know, there's gotta be a way to get at least the neediest boys and girls who are in trouble into these two schools. You gotta somehow put that into your opening. And then I do have to agree with Sharon. Before we kick off, two new guys, as much as I want them, we got about four other things we have got to address. And I know, Dr. Cash, you said you're working on them, and you know, you see the letters from the parents about our four-school situation. So just, you know, as much as I love you, we gotta keep all these things moving. So kudos, kudos, and those are my only, I give you my applause and my support.
I take it under advisement. I'll make sure.
Absolutely.
You're the least of us. Absolutely.
All right.
God's work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for your comments. I don't see any other hands. We need to wrap up. We have one more session on the education support. So with that, I'm gonna close out the Student Achievement Workshop. Kudos to both of you and Dr. Cash for fine presentation, robust, educational. So now I'm gonna pass the torch to Board Member Lawrence Scott for the Education Support Committee meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. Tonight, we are going to have a presentation from Dr. Williams, I believe, on student placement and central registration. I just want to say that this is, central registration has been something that I've long wanted to improve. I feel like we have made some strides over the past couple of years. Number one, I think just being more open and transparent with the process with parents. The updates that started coming out a couple of years ago, just to keep parents informed on when to expect to hear news, I think was very helpful to have ease some anxiety from parents. And right now, there is much anticipation from parents to get this process started, the 2022-23 Application Live. I believe we're gonna find out tonight when that will go live, what format it will be, digital or paper, when it needs to be submitted by. Also, the expectations with criterion-based assessments and application process. And then lastly, we're gonna hear about data in regards to central registration. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Cash to introduce staff, and then we'll follow the same process that Dr. Evans-Brown did, as well as Dr. Rivera. We'll have staff present, and then I will go around in alphabetical order, board member, to make comments and ask questions. So, Dr. Cash, go ahead.
Yes, Larry, you did great on the overview. That was important to give you what's gonna be in the presentation. And I'd only say that we want to be educative, both for you and for the public around this issue, because this is your induction office into the schools, into Buffalo Public Schools. So it's very important for us to be extraordinary in our service at student placement and registration. I think you'll hear that under Dr. Tanja Williams, who embodies the spirit that certainly we're after in being great customer service in this division and in this place. But there's always opportunities for improvement. She will talk about those as well, and then we will continue to strive. So, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Greetings, Chairman Scott and Co-Chair Hurd and Board President Petrucci, Board members, Superintendent Cash, colleagues, parents, caregivers, and the public. It's not easy being the last presenter of the night, but I'm going to work hard to make sure that this presentation is concise, but it's also informative and it's meaningful. And so I'm excited to share that the Department of Student Placement and Registration reopened to the public on October 4th. Dr. Cash ensured that we put in place a very rigorous safety plan, because it's an office that engages with the public. So we had to make sure that we would stagger the number of visitors that would be there at any one time. We'd make sure that every person that enters wears a face mask. If they don't have one, we have a stockpile of masks for our visitors. We have a temperature scanner, which the nurse monitors. We utilize the health screener tool. All of our staff are socially distanced from the public that they're servicing. We have a nightly cleaning protocol that is very rigorous, and we have an isolation room over at the Central Registration Center. So we make sure that safety is premium. Next slide, please. So I thought it would be good to start with a brief overview of what the real purpose of a district of our size having a one-stop shop, which is really what the purpose is of our Central Registration Department or Office. So the Central Registration Center was founded a little over a decade ago, in 2008, at School 12. And the purpose really is to provide all of our parents and caregivers with the opportunity to have their children registered and enrolled into a Buffalo school of their choice. And I say whenever possible, and I'll talk a little bit about that later, as efficiently and quickly as possible. That's really important. We didn't want to register students and then have them show up to a school to be enrolled, and maybe because there's no one there to build a schedule on that day, they'd have to come back. We wanted to do as much as we could at this one location. So in an average year, we have over eight thousand families that come through the Department of Central Registration. That's a lot of families. And so far this year, we're not even halfway through the year. We have already registered five thousand four hundred and forty-nine new or returning families. That's a lot since July 1st. And some of the offices that are over at School 12, in addition to our Student Placement and Registration Office, include a McKinney-Vento space, which is a space that services our homeless education students and ensuring that they are very much prioritized and that, you know, we place those students as quickly as possible. Under the leadership of Ann Botticelli and Nadia Nashir, we have cultural resource assistance and a language assessment center. And that language assessment center is really important. They help us with translating documents. They engage with our new American families in their native languages, and so they're very important. We also have a language assessment center. So when we get students in who are new to the district and English is not their first language, they are able to be assessed and see what supports they need, if they need to go into a dual immersion or desire to go into a dual immersion or a bilingual program. That assessment is done right there at School 12. We have a special education department. We have a nursing department. We have security staff, and we have an engineering staff. So at this one-stop shop, what happens is that parents and caregivers are able to receive information on all of the school choices. We do assessments, we register, and we enroll. Next slide. So this is what, you know, lots of our families have been waiting on, the application process. When creating the presentation, we had a goal of Friday that the application would go live. I received a phone call right before our meeting tonight. The application is live tonight. So I'm excited about that. The application is out there. It's live tonight, and that's due to the hard work of Kelly Daniels, who is the director of that department, and Myra Burton, who oversees our IT department. They work really closely. It's not easy to create an online application, but due to their diligence, we have a live application. So the deadline that has been set, and this was done in collaboration with principals, for applications to be submitted will be on Friday, February 11th. That's when all on-time applications will need to be submitted. And if we can keep with that timeline, then families will begin to receive notifications on where their child's 2022 school placements are in mid-April. That's a lot sooner than it happened last year, but last year we had COVID that hit, and so some of the notifications went out a little later. So I want to talk a little bit about the applications and the elementary application, which includes those grades from our three-wide program at the Bennett Park Montessori School all the way through eighth grade. Parents will be able to submit those applications either digitally or on paper. And so if they choose to do it digitally, there will need to be an uploading of some documents, scanning documents and uploading. And if they do it by paper, they can bring the information in. And we have about forty-two elementary schools that parents will be able to apply to. What's really exciting this year, I mean, there's a lot to be excited about, but one thing that we're very, very proud of and very excited of is that for School 64 and School 61, those are our gifted and talented schools. They are sister schools. There's one test that students take to be placed in either. This year, we're going to have our first graduating class of babies from the Arthur O. Eves School of Distinction Number 61. And we worked really hard with the principals and with Dr. Cash's blessing. Those students that graduate from School 61 this year, as a part of the gifted and talented program, will have the same opportunity to go to School 156 as their sister school peers from School 61. That's huge. We're excited about it. We think that from an equity standpoint, that was really important to have in place. So we're very, very excited about that. For the elementary schools, there are a couple of preferences that parents should know about. There's sibling preference, and so when there are seats that are available in elementary schools, if there's a brother or sister that resides in the same household, then they are able to receive preferential treatment as long as there's an opening at that school for them, this place. There's also proximity preferences. So for students that live zero point one to zero point seven miles from the school, those are considered walkers. If we have a seat that's available at the school, they certainly receive preference in applying. And finally, we have our community schools, which also receive a proximity preference for walkers, for community students, and then twenty percent of the students are able to go just throughout the district. So those are some of the preferences for our elementary schools. Again, the on-time applications will be due February 11th. They are live right now. Now, for our high schools, which include grades nine through twelve, the application process is a little more complex because there are various folks that have to complete different parts of the application. And we get students from non-BPS schools who are applying as well as BPS. The application requires that parents complete a section, teachers and/or counselors complete an evaluation section, which looks at effort, attitude, study skills, cooperation, and maturity. The principal has to sign off, and the parent has to sign off. And so because there are so many different components to the high school application, it would require a shared electronic folder for everyone, including those non-BPS students and the folks at their schools, to be able to engage with that electronic application. So for this year only, we will be having a paper, we're reverting back to a paper application for the high school component, because again, the technology wouldn't support having non-BPS school counselors and principals having access to that system. So I'll talk a little bit later also about what we're doing about that. But for this year, the paper application is out there. And we're, you know, we're really excited that, you know, we're kind of on track. Usually, the application is due the first week in December, so we're just a couple of months, you know, behind that. The counselors have already begun working, those eighth-grade school counselors have already begun working with those students who will be going to high school, informing them about what the high school programs are. We had a fantastic showcase, a virtual showcase from November 1st through the 6th. We reached four thousand seven hundred and twenty persons with that virtual showcase. That's huge. And so it wasn't all BPS students. There were students from charter schools, private schools. It was open to everyone. And the principals put so much thought into their presentations. Toya Wilson and David Hills did a magnificent job working with those high school principals to put together programs that were engaging. You know, it was interesting to see. It was recorded. And so families are able to access at any time. They have questions about what does this school offer, what does that school offer? They can always go back and engage with that video. So in the event that we ever do need to, you know, revert back to a virtual situation, we are prepared at Placement. We have our, we had a lockbox process that we put in place last year, and it actually worked pretty well. And we are able to go back to that, although they're very excited, and we're all very excited that the public can come in. You know, it's a little different when someone can come in and sit and talk to you across the table. But what I do want to say is this, the staff over at Placement last year never stopped working. They never stopped. They never went remote, and they never stopped. And so because what we know is that it's difficult sometimes to take pictures of documents and upload those on your phone and send them or, you know, to try to scan them, we had staff from Placement going to homes to get documents from families at a time where, you know, you know, it wasn't necessarily safe to engage. We didn't know with COVID, you know, how things were. The staff was so dedicated. They would come out. And when families were leaving items in the lockbox and needed, you know, copies of documents, they would go and get the copy, you know, get the documents, go inside, make the copies come back out. You know, so this went on all year last year. That staff over there is super committed. They work late. They work on Saturdays. They work really hard. It's a small staff. But again, you've heard the numbers, five thousand, over five thousand families already this year have been, you know, supported through that office. So I'm very proud of the work that they do over there. Next slide, please. I wanted to give you kind of an overview on the six high schools that we have that are criteria-based and share with you what the criteria is that they look at, starting with performing arts. They are in the middle right now of auditions, you know, and so they came up with the safety plan. Dr. Cash approved it. You know, Toya Wilson took a look at it, and, you know, they are in the process right now of auditioning students for next year. They look at, of course, They look at, of course, how the auditions come out. They look at grades for students, attendance. There are recommendation letters from community artists. And then there are teacher evaluations. HUG Tech is involved right now in entrance testing. You know, Dr. Morcaccio worked very closely with David Hills, myself. Dr. Cash approved it. And so we have hundreds of students right now that are going over and testing for HUG Tech at each one of these sessions. We have a makeup, we have a couple of makeup dates that are set for January. And I've shared for you what they are looking for as far as criteria. They look at the tests, grades, and then that teacher evaluation piece that is on the application. City Honors in Olmsted, we are gearing up now to begin our testing in January. The tests will all be at Frederick Law Olmsted. We will have families pre-register for the test so that we can ensure social distancing. But we're gearing up for that. We've been meeting with the principals from those schools. These are dates that they felt most comfortable with. And so that will be starting right after the winter break. Middle Early College, I spoke with the principal there. They will begin interviewing students shortly after all of the applications are due. They have to know who's applied to their school in order to begin their interviews. So they will start their interview shortly after February 11. And then Leonardo da Vinci, they don't do interviews and they don't have testing, but they certainly have criteria that they look at that include the teacher evaluations, the grades and the attendance. Next slide, please. So some student data. Chairman Scott asked me, you know, just to share a little data. And so I want to share with you where we came up with that 5,449 families that have been supported already this year between July 1st and December 6. And before I do, I want to also share that last year, the total year serviced, 4,543. So already we're at half point. We've already serviced more this year. That's how hard that team is working over there. Already serviced more this year than we did for the entire school year last year. So there are students who are first time students, and I apologize, that should say three Y, pre-K, kindergarten and first grade. Those are students who have never, ever been in school before. And so far this year, we've already registered 2,492. We have students that are coming from other public schools in New York State. It could be Amherst, could be Brooklyn, Syracuse, Hamburg. And they've already registered 626 of those students. And then, of course, we have our out of state students that come to us. We received already this year, 509 students from charter schools already. We've registered 375 students into UPK programs. Those are some of the community based pre-K programs. And the team over there is responsible for registering those students also. So our both these programs include schools like Falk, Baker Victory, et cetera. We've registered 227 students there, 198 into Head Start. We've received 147 students who are new Americans from out of the country. Our non-public schools in New York State include all Catholic and parochial schools. We've also registered students into agencies. Our special ed department handles that piece. And then we've had 85 students that the department has registered into our CCI program. So those are young adults that we've registered into that program. They register home schooled families. And then when we receive students that may be coming from a detention facility, we've had a couple of those students that they've registered. And we've had one student who had dropped out and was returning to school. So that's how we came up with the number of 549 students. And again, that was as of December 6. It's a fluid number. I'm sure today, you know, there are more because every day that's a very, very busy office. So there would be even more students today. Next slide. And I'm wrapping up now. I want to end by sharing some of our opportunities for improvement. That's really important to me as the associate over that department. So four to five years ago, what we were experiencing over there were long lines. Folks were waiting for hours in line to get their kids registered, especially right before school started. And so the way that we handled that was that we started to have our E and L students go to school three over the summer to be registered. It was closer, there was better access, and it really cut down on a lot of what we were seeing prior to that. Three years ago, we were having issues with leadership staff stability. We had three directors over there in a very short period of time. We now have stability. Two years ago, there were communication issues that I heard about all the time. The telephones were ringing, nobody was answering. I'm not hearing that. Last year COVID hit and so everything kind of, you know, we had to revamp everything and we did. And every single application that we had was processed and students were able to start school on time. That's huge. So for this year, because I'm always looking at how can we improve, there are four buckets that we're focusing on. The first is training. That is a staff that works with a very diverse group of parents. They don't get to cherry pick who comes in, how they come in. And so we will always continuously be doing customer service training over there. I would like for Dr. Morell and her team to come over and train the staff in some of the CLRI practices. I think the trauma piece is really important. And so we're looking to do continuous training for the staff there. Capacity as far as technology is concerned is really important. Right now, they're interacting with three different technology systems. The first is Versatran, then we have Infinite Campus, and then we have Magnet. And it's very time consuming when they're registering and enrolling because they have to go out of one system and into another. And so last year, we had a vendor that worked with us and took a look and did a lot of assessment with all three of those systems to see if they could be married and what it would take. And so now we are able to look at with some of our ARP funds at, you know, doing an RFP so that we can move into the next system. And we're looking to get one system so that we can create a user friendly application. We can have documents uploaded and be attached to that application, running lotteries electronically, considering proximity and siblings, and then a system that will then be able to generate assignment letters. So it's a big task, but we've already done phase one. Now we're moving into phase two. The next piece is marketing. There's always going to be a need for increased and enhanced marketing. So, you know, working more closely with our PR department so that we can have more of a social media presence, maybe getting out and visiting the schools so that the registration clerks are familiar firsthand with the programs that are offered at each of our schools and able to speak fluently about them with parents as they, you know, come over and visit. And then finally, equity. Equity is the linchpin in all of the work in our division. And what we really want to have happen is that we are ensuring that equity and assignments is happening for all of our students, regardless of zip code, regardless of socioeconomic status, regardless of any of that, in a timely fashion. And that the choices that parents want for their children, as much as we can, will be the choices that we're able to offer. We do have to always look at seat availability though and make sure that there's space at the school that parents may want to have their children attend. Next slide. And I'm concluding now. One of the lessons that we learned from this past year is that patience, flexibility, excellence, collaboration and attention to detail matter specifically with that department. So with that being said, I'll conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Mr. Scott.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Williams. And I failed to mention that, yes, Kelly Daniels, director over at Central Registration and all the staff really adapted. And although there were delays last year, they adapted very well to the pandemic and adjusted and made sure that the process worked for our parents and for our students. So I commend them during that tough time last year. All right, first, we will go with Ms. Sharon Belton Cotman. Any thoughts, questions?
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I know you've had a long day. I know what time your day starts and I thank you for being here with us. Thank you for the details. So I do have a question because there has been situations where there has been neighborhood preference afforded to people outside of the point one to point seven mile guideline. Has that been corrected?
So when you say neighborhood preference, anytime that a parent comes over, because we're a choice district, if they choose a school that's in their neighborhood, that's the only way that neighborhood preference would be the school that they would get is if they live within a certain mile radius. But if they choose a school and there's an opening that's there.
Yeah, but you do. So you do still have neighborhood preference, right?
Oh, yes.
Other than outside of the proximity perimeters of point one to point seven for walkers, right?
Right, so we have the point one to point seven for the walkers. And then I believe it's point seven one to 1.5 and it's called community. And then anything beyond that would be district.
Okay, so what I'm, what my parents are telling me is that they cannot have access to certain schools. One parent approached me and said, please get me another African American child in this school so my daughter, in this class or in this school, so my daughter is not alone. In the court case from 1970, and then again with Orfield. Okay, Gary Orfield, when he came back in 217, he was clear to say that we had to take down the neighborhood barriers and we had to uphold the original ruling of Judge Curtin because we did not have our community segregated. So in a situation where there is a school where these, these extra layers are put in, it does not allow other children the opportunity from outside of that community to have access to those buildings. That's inequitable and it's against the law. And so I'm concerned about that as a, someone who's concerned about equity. But I'm also concerned about it because we are definitely in violation of the OCR agreement and we're in violation of the original ruling. So I don't understand how it continues to exist, is what I'm saying. Okay, because in a given situation, if the majority of the seats are taken up by someone who lives within that community, how is that allowing other parents to have choice?
So are you speaking of community schools specifically?
Thinking of, I don't care what label it is. It's called neighborhood preference. And whether it exists in South Buffalo, North Buffalo, East Buffalo, from everything that I have and the documents that I have, we are not supposed to be doing it. So what does that say to my people or my community, the Ferry District, who cannot get a seat in North Buffalo because their parents cannot afford to live in North Buffalo? So we have to look at that. That is an Achilles' heel and we are vulnerable. And I brought it up several times and for whatever reason, it has never been addressed. So I'm concerned about that. And I really need to get some clarity on it because as a representative of one of the poorest school districts in this, in this city, I want my children to be able to have access across the district. And they're being denied access in several schools because of where they live. Not because of where they live.
Yeah, I need to review some of that, but it is my understanding that the community schools were created in areas where there were lower performing schools. And it was an attempt, I believe, to try to really build up, you know, the programming in those schools and create some, you know, give parents some pride. So even for some of the schools in your district, there are community schools and parents that live in those areas do get preference to those schools also.
It doesn't matter. The preference issue is the, is the issue that I'm questioning here. That is outside of the parameters of the law. Okay, because as a parent, okay, my child will never be able to get in a North Buffalo school because he lives in the Ferry District close to his house. Close to his house because there's a limited number of positions every year in those schools. That system is broke and it has to be fixed. And I'm going, and I'm going to go on record at this meeting to say that it needs to be addressed during this cycle because it has been allowed to exist for too long. I want to know which board member sitting at this table feels that it is okay for a limited space to be made available for children in this district and we have free choice? That's my point here. Okay, so I'm not trying, I'm only advocating for my constituents and other constituents that are not getting access to those buildings. And that's consistent.
So we, we've had this conversation before and we've had some mistruths corrected. It needs to be clarified that those ratios are pertaining to all of our community schools.
It would not matter, Larry.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I need you to be clear. It has nothing to do with community.
School 81, it needs to be corrected for the public. School 81, there is not a neighborhood preference, to my knowledge, for school 81. It is open to all students equally, to my knowledge.
So school 64 is not a community school?
Correct.
It exists in that school, just, okay? So I'm telling you what I know. I'm not, I'm not, you should know by now, if I come forward at this table, that I know what I'm talking about. And what I'm asking is, is that we look at that in fairness to the children in this district. Why is it that some schools have very few minority children in there? Take a look at the data, it's there. Okay, and so I don't care if it's conceived that I'm, I'm throwing Kathy out there. At this point, this is an issue that needs to be addressed in this district. Okay, and if it's not addressed as a Ferry School representative, then I feel that I have to make sure that this board is put on notice that the time is of essence to fix this at this point. It's not fair. It's not fair because a child cannot live in that neighborhood, that they cannot have access to that building. It's not, it's not fair. Thank you. Tanja, I appreciate your work you're doing, Dr. Williams. I appreciate the work you're doing and will help you in any aspect I can. But I'm not going to sit back and allow to see inequitable guidelines and procedures exist and not bring them up. That's not what I'm sitting here for. We have to change this, we have to do right by all children in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belton Cotman. Next, Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Williams, for that presentation. I learned a lot. I have two observations. One, and it just so happens to be related to school 64, the one Sharon Cotman just talked about. So you talked about sibling preference. And you indicated that if it's an opening, so say for example, if, you know, I know of a situation where a person wanted their sibling to go there. The child go to the school, so the sibling's now ready to go and there wasn't an opening. So what would that person do? Would she have to reapply next year, for example, for an opening for her sibling?
Yes, so every year starts a new application process. Yes.
All right, I was disheartened because I just automatically thought that that existed. I know when my kids were in Magnus School, it was just automatic that a sibling would follow, you know, in the footsteps.
So they would is, so the only time that that doesn't happen is if there are more siblings than there are seats that are available. And so then we have to run a lottery. So if there are only five seats, but there are 15 siblings, then we have to run a lottery.
Okay, all right, that's fair. And then my, my second observation, the high school showcase. You indicated that, you know, you had, and I remember, and you said 4,000 views of participants. Is that something that you keep on the web? Or constituents that they can go on and look at it?
Yes, it was recorded.
Okay, so that, that's why I was born with that because if not, my recommendation would be to have, you know, a couple of them. But you answered my question, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown. Mr. Terrence Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. There's a question I do have about, about students that are in Buffalo Public Schools that's not from the city of Buffalo. Could you please go with the criteria for those students that's been placed in Buffalo Public Schools that's not in the city of Buffalo or live in, reside in the city of Buffalo?
You mean a student that may live in Cheektawaga?
Yes, or any other neighboring district.
So we're a Buffalo Public School District, so the expectation is that students in the city of Buffalo, students reside in the city of Buffalo to access our schools for free. So if we have students that live outside of the district that are interested in attending a school within the district, the criteria is the same, and if they qualify, but they still reside outside of the district, then they would need to pay tuition in order to attend a school within our district.
And that tuition amount would be the same amount as, as we project a child that, that entered into the school, city of Buffalo?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And how, how is that selected? Is there a selection process for these students to enter into, into our schools that's for a fee, for a price? How's that selected? How many children do we have, respectively?
So I would need to work with our finance department to see how many students we have right now that reside outside of the city of Buffalo and who are attending one of our schools.
Okay. And, and with this, with this question, my concern is about the number of students that's taken seats in Criterion Schools that's paying from out of district and not allowing, you know, inner-city kids to have these seats. So if you can come with the numbers, that'd be very, very much appreciated. And so we can get a number and a base of how many children, you know, attend schools that's not in our district. I know there's other means, reasons why kids or, or students, you know, they move out of the district and, and leave the district, or hardship may happen where they can still continue going to school inside of Buffalo. Those, I'm not, if you have a number on those also, that'll be great also.
Okay, so let me clarify that. If we have students who are on the waiting list that reside in the city of Buffalo, they receive the preference. It's only if there's a true opening, and there's a student outside of the city that would like to attend one of our schools, but we, and we have a true opening and no waiting list, that we would allow that to happen.
Okay. Okay. So we can get, we can receive the number of children that, that's doesn't reside in the city of Buffalo, that's attending Buffalo Schools?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just wanted to calculate that, just to see the, see if there's any disparities about children who live in the city of Buffalo that may want to enter or come into a Criterion Program that's not being recognized, you know, for that program, or maybe be placed on the waiting list, that could be unjust. So, so thank you, thank you.
I think what would be helpful, too, I'm going to have Dr. Will Karestis reach out to you and have a conversation with you. I think it would be very helpful. We worked, I think, a couple of years ago, board members to really make adjustments, substantial adjustments to what used to be the practice where a lot of people, if you knew somebody, you could get into our, to our top Criterion Schools in terms of academic achievement. The Olmstead 64, the, the Olmstead 156, the City Honors School, and so forth. BAFTA even as well. And we, we worked hard on that, Mr. Hurd, and, and Dr. Cresty did an excellent job leading that work to make sure that all the things being equal, we really wanted Buffalo students to be taking those seats in the Criterion Schools. So a lot of work has been done in that regard. He'll, he'll be much more comprehensive and informative about that. And, and I'm going to have him reach out to you and help you with, with that particular question. This is a good question, but it's not like it used to be. So we want to, we want to take, now, there are some schools, like a school 84, for example, where, where students come from all over, all over the county and come into our schools. So we, we have some schools like that, and that's a, and that's a great example of service to, to the larger community. But that's, I, I want you to really get clear that we're not, it's not willy-nilly like it used to be, Tanja. And you can't just call up somebody and say, I want my kid in that school, you know, because I'm a powerful person in the community. And so I, I'm really proud of, of how, how much progress we've made on that to make it fair first for our kids here in Buffalo.
And, 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 Cash, I, I also had heard several parents say that, you know, they teach here in the city of Buffalo but lives outside the district, that would rather have their kids, you know, in the building with them. If, if, I don't know, you know, what's our policy with that is, if a teacher teaches inside the city of Buffalo, I'd rather have a child that's in the building with them that, that they can help educate or nurture throughout their school year. I don't know what we have done with that in the past also, or if that's part of the same policy.
Yeah, we don't register. If they don't reside in the city of Buffalo, we wouldn't register them over at Student Placement. They have to provide proof of residency.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. And one thing to add to what Dr. Cash said, I know that a few years ago, what the big change that we made was in order for you to apply and take the test for City Honors in Olmstead, you had to reside in the city of Buffalo. You had to show proof of, of your residence in the city of Buffalo. Where before, I, I think I remember Dr. Cash saying there were literally people from Canada that were taking the test to get into City Honors. Next, I don't see hope, Jay, here. Ms. McCosey.
Remember, Scott, I, I think a couple of the questions that I had have already sort of kind of been addressed. I do want to, I, I, I do want to dig into the, the whole preference thing only because I'm hearing that, you know, you, you were a school of choice, so if people apply to go to that school, and they're choosing to go to that school, but also along the lines of this preference, do the people, and I just need clarification for myself and actually like three people who just texted me, do the people who live close by, do they have the opportunity? Now, I'm hearing from Board Member Scott that 81, no matter where you live, it's, it's, you know, whoever chooses to go to that school. We do have schools in the city of Buffalo where if you live close to the school, you have preference over everyone else before the choices are made or before people can choose to go there. That exists?
For elementary schools, yes.
For element, okay. And, and that just needed to be clarified because it, you know, we, we are a district of choice, and that comes up with much reasoning around transportation and the whole nine, and then it becomes this kind of confusing factor. So I just wanted to clarify that. And also, like, Board Member Hurd did raise a question that I, I had, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to clarify that. I do have a question around schools like the, the Criterion Schools, particularly middle college. We're trying to grow programs. I had a question from the last, the last session, and I don't know if I missed my name, but it kind of ties into this. When we have schools that we're trying to grow or we're trying to bring to the table, I totally believe in, you know, we have many cri, we have not just Criterion Schools, but schools that are being, that are innovative, that are, you know, pretty new, that we're trying to put programs in place, and we really don't even have the data to see how the cohorts are doing at this point because they are so new. I respect bringing new schools in, but we also have schools like Middle College, who's kind of stuck in a building, is growing. You know, we have to find schools to house other schools, and I know we've talked about putting them in another school as well, and that's been coming up as parents are, are looking to bring their kids to middle college of, you know, space, right? So I guess, only because I'm answering questions that are coming to me about this, are we looking into moving Middle College out of Bennett and, and giving them another building? I know it was something that was on the table, and I guess that would also influence how many kids we take in every time we do, you know, another recruiting measure. And they're just, you know, I feel like they've been moved and pushed into so many buildings and, and so many different, you know, over the years that I, I'm really kind of advocating for them, also because I have parents who have been contacting me. So I just want to put that on the table that as we think about how we're growing these schools, and you have so much interest in them, you know, we, we, I want to see these academies like tomorrow. I think they're great. I think the, the gender question that we addressed earlier was addressed, and that, that covers it, like, we can really make these happen, but we have to get the space for folks. And Middle College has become, you know, it's a Criterion School, it's a great school, and, you know, it's just, it, there's, we need, we have a space issue. So I'm just wondering, basically for public's sake, but also for my own, are we, are we looking to house them in another, in another location? I know it's been talked about and put on the table before.
Short answer is yes. It's one of the six or seven priorities to, to try to, to try to get the schools that we want to grow a little bit and are excellent schools into their own space. We're trying to do that. It's all up on the big board. That's one of them. Same with the boutique school. The School of Bioinformatics and Life Sciences, which is also at, at Bennett. That's a great little school. We'd like it to grow between 300 and 400, but it, it should be in its own space, and I ideally would like to see that in the medical corridor. And again, we're making overtures and outreach to, to folks who are key decision-makers about the UB Medical Corridor, and, and I'd like to put it right there. So there, these things are all on the big board. We're trying, but they just do take a little bit of time. They take a little bit of time so that we can determine whether we're going to purchase and lease more property, for example, for ECC closer to, I'm sorry, MEC closer to ECC. We're looking at right, trying to reboot and reestablish a fresh relationship with ECC, which had gotten a little sour there under the prior administrations, but they have a new president, I think, either onboard or coming onboard very soon. I'm scheduled to meet with that individual. So that will have some implications for, for MEC. And then we want to ultimately free Bennett to become the world-class innovative technology high school that I know there's a lot of interest in and growing. And so they have a good, strong principal over there right now. They have a great alumni association. You know, they're winning games in football. So a lot of interest to become a standalone Bennett High School again, and so we want to grow toward that. So all of these things are up there, Jen. It, you know, it just, we, we, we're trying to make it all fit together and, and see where, where we can make the best decision for, for the, for the school while we also, you know, don't overburden long-term the financial expenses for the district and the board. We're really excited, for example, about the benchy and the plan we have for that. But that may take another year and a half. But believe me, it's a great, it's going to be wonderful when it's done. So if you're just a little patient with us, what I can assure you is that this is all in the consideration mix, and our staff is working really hard to make it happen.
I really appreciate that, Dr. Cash, and I know, you know, the public does as well. Just that clarification right here, right now, is, it's, it's real, and that I need, you know, I needed folks to hear you say, you know, exactly what you got on the table. And yeah, patience is a virtue, but it's got it, you know, we, everything good takes time. And again, you know, I don't want to be repetitive, but Dr. Williams, thank you so much for the presentation. I learned a lot, and thank you for answering the questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McCosey. President Petrusi.
Thank you, Chair Scott, for the opportunity. Good evening, Dr. Williams. I just wanted to, first, I'll start by thanking you and Director Daniels. I know that I ask you guys a lot of questions. I'm always appreciative of your fast response. I do have some, some specific questions for tonight, though. With respect to our universal pre-cake program, I know it's always very popular. Do we have a waiting list this year or not?
I will need to check into that and find out. I'll find out for you.
Thank you. One thing, I, I know that former President Cotman spoke about school choice, and, you know, it's, it's good time for us to revisit our, our Criterion-based schools and our schools that have these preferences and see what, what's going on with them. But I will say, knowing from speaking to many parents that, who have children that attend schools in, in the Park District, one of the stumbling blocks, or one of the things that, that definitely influences their decision is that middle school transportation, that oftentimes they don't send their kid to, or their child to a, a specific school because they can't fully participate in all the school offers and then have a way for the child to get home. And that sometimes influences their choice when they're making those decisions as to what school that, that, so it's, it's part of a larger, a larger discussion that we should have, particularly at the middle school level. But transportation oftentimes does impact choice, which is my segue into my next question. One of the things I know you and I have gone back and forth about is, in my district, when, when students are placed at Riverside, just because oftentimes I have a student that can literally throw a stone across the street, and they're in Lackawanna or West Eneca, and they're on the bus for an hour and 15, hour and 20, hour and a half to get to Riverside. You know, if they miss the connection, if they do something afterwards, it's even longer because the buses run with less frequency, and, and parents don't want their children on the bus for that long. So it's just very frustrating because I know, I know that oftentimes there are limited seats available, but still, it just makes it very difficult for the parents in my community when their child's on the bus for that long.
So what I can assure you is that the placement staff, wherever they can, if it's a parent's choice to attend a school that, you know, is in their district, and that's what they want, and their seat availability, they certainly, you know, do all that they can to have the student placed there. But what we run into sometimes is that students make decisions to apply to schools just based on friends or things they've heard. And parents sometimes understand how far away it is, or some things about the school, and sometimes they don't. And so right on the application this year, we've put on the application that there's a one-year commitment because once a student is accepted into a high school especially, there's a lot of work that goes into it. You know, the school generates a letter welcoming them. You know, they assign lockers, they begin building schedules, they have, you know, a summer orientation. And so it gets very disruptive when we get lots of, you know, parents that say, ah, you know, I didn't realize Riverside was an hour and a half away. And so they now want to go to, you know, maybe whatever the school is, East High School or South Park High School. But wherever we can, we try to work with families and to make that happen. But we do want parents making informed decisions so that they know this is a really serious process, and, you know, they have five choices. And so certainly, we don't want to take a seat from a student who made a conscious choice to apply to East High School at the last minute because a parent says, wait a minute, I want my child to go to East. I didn't apply to East, but I want my child to go there. So we really look at the application with fidelity, and we try to accompany, you know, as many of those choices as we possibly can for children and parents that choose different schools.
And I appreciate that, and I, I appreciate, you mentioned my Uncle Tony Hoppa's alma mater, East High School. Always good to have a shout-out for East. One of the things I know that we've had discussions over is that a lot of our families don't realize that the application deadline is so early in the process. So I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit about outreach, because inevitably I will have someone who will reach out to me because they made application in, you know, in May, in June, in July, and they thought, or they presumed that they would, that, that there's all these openings in our Buffalo Public Schools, and as you well know, they fill up quickly. So I was just wondering if you could speak a little bit about the outreach.
Yeah, I think, you know, we can continue to grow in that area. We have it on our website, you know, we inform principals, we do robo calls, you know, but can we always continue to increase, you know, how we are marketing to schools at the application deadline? I think, you know, doing presentations like this, you know, is important so that, you know, as many ways as we can get the word out. Social media is another way. We certainly want to get the word out. So, you know, we do do, you know, marketing in multi-tiered ways, but, you know, there will always be in multi-tiered ways, but you know, there will always be some that maybe, you know, we're not reaching, but we rely on, you know, even with our parent partners, you know, they all have connections to stakeholders. And so if they're able to share with their stakeholders that the application deadline is coming up, I think, you know, last year we began putting things, um, on our webpage, just updates to let them know, you know, you've got seven weeks, you've got six weeks, there's a countdown. And we probably will do that again, uh, this year. So as many ways as we can get the word out, we will, um, we get the word out, uh, with translated documents for our families that are E and L, uh, families, our school counselors, Mrs. Daniels and her team presents to them so that they know and as they're in schools working with staff, they know it, principals know it. But can we always continue, I think, to, you know, get better in that area? Absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, we can always improve. Um, and I appreciate that by you and your staff, uh, that ability and that recognition that we can always do things better. Um, with respect to our boutique high schools, um, I've just wondered, do we have, is there, um, are we able to accommodate the majority of people who make applications? Or do we have large pools of people that apply, but we can only handle 20 or 25 of the applicant pool of 100?
No, I don't think we have a waiting list at all at this point for boutique schools.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. That's, that's all my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, President Petrusi. Dr. Anne Rivera.
Again, thank you for your presentation. Also, your willingness to answer such in-depth questions. Uh, sorry to say, I have another one. I actually have two. Uh, the first one is about, um, reducing barriers to access for students wanting to apply to schools, particularly, or even changing high schools, particularly with high schools. So one of the experiences I had as a parent and then working with CPAC is that students would choose a school that had a particular focus and maybe it wouldn't be the best fit for them. Some of this has to do with our neurodiverse learners where like career and technical education might be a better fit for them at different points. But I think it has to do with our typical learners too. Is there a way for students to, um, for us to understand what the barriers might be, for students to understand what schools they might want to go to, and then maybe to change high schools if they find that one they're in isn't a good fit?
So do you mean as far as us informing students so that they really understand what some of the CTE programs, you know, what, what is a day in the life at Emerson? What's a day in the life at McKinley or at Burghardt? You know, what the expectations are? We do a lot of work with our counselors, um, so that when they're meeting with their seventh and eighth graders and families, they're talking to them. It's almost like, um, like a college-going, uh, process, but it's a high school-going process. And so we look at, do you, you know, do well in larger schools or smaller schools? You know, is a long bus ride something that, um, matters to you or it doesn't? Um, culinary arts, you know, that's an art. It really is an art. It's a lot of work. It's not just going and making cupcakes. There's a lot of work, um, with the CTE piece of it as well as with the academic piece. And so we want folks to understand, children want to apply to performing arts because they love to dance. That's just one part of the curriculum. There's also New York State graduation requirements that they have to meet. And so they do a lot of work with students, um, so that they really understand, you know, the complexities and, um, you know, how challenging it can be at some of these schools. I encourage, um, parents, when I speak with them, to do shadowing, you know, if they're able to do shadowing, you know, if they're able to visit the school sites and look at, you know, um, you know, the open house programs virtually. It's not easy now because, you know, we are in a time where we're not just having large groups of children come out and go into schools, but wherever they can do some research on the school because these are really serious choices that, and, and, you know, the reality is the children are 12 and 13 years old. And so, you know, they may not understand the seriousness of the choice that a 17 or 18-year-old applying to college would, you know, understand. So we need for our parents to really understand and, um, you know, to do some investigation, um, into the school they're applying to.
Thank you. I think I just have two comments then. One, just to think about, um, doing maybe a little needs assessment as you move forward and continue to improve because what you just said is great. And I endorse all of it. I think that's a really important thing. I do know even just now as a parent of a almost 13-year-old who's doing this process, literally now, we're in the middle of it. Um, there's still a lot of confusion out there. Parents are still really confused about what it means, about what their options are. And it might be worth thinking as we come out of COVID, you've had enough to do, right? There's been a lot going on right now. So this is just about thinking forward and maybe scaling forward about the next steps that we could do. Thinking about ways maybe to embed it in students, even in their grade level pieces, because sometimes, as Dr. Cash mentioned before, guidance counselors have caseloads of like hundreds and hundreds of students, and it's hard to reach them. It's hard to ask folks to have that. They just don't have the capacity. So it might be something as you think forward and you plan forward, that might be something to think around. So that's my one.
Thank you.
I hope it's helpful. It was, I'm offering it in the spirit of helpfulness, for sure.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then the second one is equally true about accessibility for our neurodiverse learners. Placement is difficult for our 12 and 13-year-olds. It can be doubly difficult, triply difficult for our students with neurodiverse needs. That might be a place to think about as we move forward as well.
Okay. You'll be happy to know that, um, the department does work very closely with our CTE department. And so all of our seventh graders that take home in careers do do, um, career inventory that kind of gives them some insight into, you know, some of their likes and where their strengths are. You know, do you like working with your hands? Do you like, you know, plants and that kind of thing? And it gives them a little bit of, um, guidance into some of the programs that we do offer.
I appreciate that. You're right. I am glad to hear that. And I think it's an interesting intersection with some of the student voice work that's, that's going on in special education now as well. I'm looking forward to seeing those points really come together and communicate well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Um, Ms. Woods, and then I have one question and one comment. Go ahead, Ms. Woods.
Okay. Excellent presentation. You made tremendous progress reorganizing the admission center. Uh, I noted that the, in your advertisement for when people are going to take the test for City Honors, City Honors is my problem high school. Uh, you said you're going to offer the test only at one place, Homestead. What a lot of people had been pushing, and I thought was progress, was that the test was offered in more areas. So neighborhood schools, parents knew about the test and got an opportunity to take it. So I'm not sure that going back and putting it at one place is a great decision. I, I'd ask you to kind of take a look at that because, uh, opening the access to City Honors or something, we're all getting a lot of heat. And that was one of the steps to open access, letting the exam be taken more, more places.
So that's just for high school. For the elementary school, uh, we will continue to do the in-school testing for any fourth grader or sixth grader. They can take the test right at their home school. So if you go to school 37, school 53, you can have the test administered right at that school. It's only for high school that we're doing the, um, the 156, the one site.
And I assume the kids that are not BPS students.
Correct.
Currently. So, so for Dr. Williams, because Ms. Woods, I'm sorry to interject here because this was my question too, because I know this was something that-
You know I'm getting hit.
We did a few years ago where we started administering the test within our schools so that every BPS student had access, every fourth grade student. Last year, we couldn't do that because of the pandemic. So, Dr. Williams, you're saying this year, every fourth grade student who wants to take the test can take the test in their schools? And can we get a sense of when that might occur?
We're planning to start that. We just, um, got the new test and I'm working with, uh, Associate Superintendent Bullock. Um, and as soon as the contract and all of that has been finalized, we're ready to go. Her team is ready to go. My team is ready to go. So we're hoping early January, we're ready to go.
Excuse me, point, can I ask a question on that? So do the children need to have a signature? Do they need their parents' signature to take the test?
So in the past, we had students opt in to take the test. Uh, this year, we want to offer to all students and parents can opt out because we believe, you know, there are children who are absolutely brilliant, you know, and just, you know, because of whatever the circumstance, they weren't opted in. And so they don't have the opportunity to take it. So we're looking this year at offering it to all of our fourth graders and parents have the opportunity to opt out if they don't want their children to take it.
And we were promised that four years ago. Just want you to know that. We were told that four years ago. Thanks.
Not by me. Dr. Williams, you, as you can tell, this City Honors thing's been sensitive. I get my head handed to me so much. Okay, so, uh, my question again, City Honors, what about the, uh, a training, this is a parent you're telling me, the, the test that we used gave us worse results on getting minorities into City Honors. So the new test you're talking about, I'm hoping that somehow, some way, we can have better results. And the parents are saying to me, can we do training so that children who don't have, uh, uh, parents who've been teaching them how to take the test and what's in the test and these different, uh, aspects of the test, so they can have the opportunity to do well on the test? Is that was something that I even have a group that's interested and working with us to do because they're saying our kids are not scoring high enough because they need, just like we do for our civil service in Erie County, we recruited minorities, we get training, and then they scored high enough so we could reach those kids. So what about some kind of training so that our kids can do better? So we can get more minority kids in the City Honors?
So I don't think there's any training that, um, that they can do really to prepare them for the test. But I, you know, we're partnering with, uh, Buffalo Prep. We're looking to establish a partnership with Buffalo Prep. And so what it can help them with is understanding the endurance that's involved in taking the test. You have to be able to sit and focus, you know, for 60 to 90 minutes, um, some strategies with that, you know, so that they're not surprised when they come into the test that, you know, this is too long, I'm tired, or, you know. So we think, you know, doing some of that will certainly help. Familiarizing them with, you know, not going ahead because if you go ahead and you're not following directions, you could be disqualified. There are all these things that we want to make sure that our families know and understand before the test. But I don't think we're able to train them or teach them, you know, the content that would be on the test. But the endurance, the durability and all of that, I think it's important that they have the opportunity to be exposed to some of that.
When you said the content that's on the test, that's not what I'm talking about. We at Erie County made a conscious effort to reach out and get more, a broader base of, of minorities and other groups doing one of the tests. We taught them things like, if you see the word never, that's a flag. It is probably true. If you see always, these are red flags that can make you rule out two of the crazy choices and only be picking from two, 50% chance, even if you guess, you 50% get a chance of doing one of the tests. There are test-taking mechanisms and, you know, some of us have been privileged. We have parents and aunts and everybody that work with us. But that ain't the case for a lot of our kids. So this is something that's coming to me from the community. That's why I'm sharing it with you. And, um, I'd like to see us do something on it. Uh, the question, what about our, uh, what about our, um, Jesse Ketchum winners? Are they going to be taken care of in this, uh, uh, this year in getting the school of their choice?
That already happened. It happened for this year. Um, so we took a look at all of our Jesse Ketchum winners and their first choices, and we assessed whether or not they got in. And we were able to offer to students, um, you know, their first choices if they did not. Some chose to, some chose to stay, you know, where they had already been, um, accepted into. But we did start that this year. So every single winner was a question.
Okay, last question, I can, uh, call it. What, you mentioned Emerson and you mentioned the importance of somebody, a guidance counselor, helping these children to understand their aptitudes, doing and studying something that they love to do. So just get paid to do what you love to do and you'll be, you'll be a success. What I'm finding and I'm hearing at Emerson is it's now becoming, uh, I don't want to say quite a dumping ground, but they're getting a large number of students who are not interested in cooking and they quickly find out they're, this isn't where they want to, really want to be. And what I'm hearing from you is not that easy to transfer out. So I guess what I'm saying to you is I'm getting a lot of instances in student bodies at my, at Emerson because these kids aren't focusing there and they shouldn't be there. And I'd like to know, Dr. Cash, how we get more counselors, guidance counselors, and put something in place, keep those kids out, or fewer kids being put into Emerson and schools that they're really not interested in because it's a failure for them and it's difficult on the administrators when the kids aren't focused in that area. So the guidance counselor really give guidance. They give information, but the find, the choice is the parent's choice. The only way that a child would be assigned to Emerson is if they've chosen it on their applications. So that's why we know there's a lot of work to do with our parents so that they understand, you know, Emerson is a school that focuses on culinary arts. That's what it focuses on. And so, you know, it's a school that's not a criteria-based school. So if they put it on their application, it's a lottery-based school. It's open, it's available to everyone. So if they put it on their application and if their name is selected in the lottery, that's the way that they get assigned to Emerson. But the counselor never, um, you know, tells a student, you should go to Emerson or you should not. Because if they do and it doesn't work out, now they own that. So they give the information, they give some guidance, they give what the criteria is to get in. They can give information on the program, the size of the program, where the program is located, where they can go and get research, you know, figure, you know, see what, what a day in the life at Emerson might be. But they'll never tell a kid, you go to Hutch Tech or you go to Emerson. That's really the parent's choice. Okay. Um, again, I'm saying the counselor's job is to focus that kid on something they love doing. What do you do? I'm in my garden. So send me to McKinley because I'm always in my garden. You, you know, the, teach the kid where you're at, what do you do so you get paid to do what you love doing and you will, uh, you will excel? Do we do that? How do we do that? How do we intensify that?
We do encourage that. I mean, but do we have students that apply every year even against a guidance counselor guiding and saying, so you have to have a certain average? Um, last year's acceptance class, 80% of the children had, I don't know, 85 average. So a student may have a 64. Can they still apply? Absolutely. They can apply. If they decide, I don't care what you say, I'm still applying. I want to go. The guidance counselor can't scratch that choice off of their application because, you know, it's a parent's decision. And so they can, but they try to give as much information as they can for families to make those, you know, informative decisions. So they're taking the career inventory to see where their strengths are. Uh, the counselors are working with the children to make sure they know and understand what the expectations is of the program. Uh, we work with our parents to make sure that they understand. Uh, so, but at the end of the day, it's a, it's a school choice district and parents do have the choice, um, to apply to, you know, any school that they'd like to.
Okay. I still say at the end of the day, you got one counselor for 400 people. So I think we need to put a little more, uh, resources into that. That's, you know, speaking for my school, Emerson. Thank you.
Hey, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. And you answered my one question, Dr. Williams. The, the point I wanted to make, and there is a question to it, but I don't think we have the answer. I, I know that from Mr. Pritchard, he has reported that every year we average about 700 to 800 students returning from charter schools. And it seems like we get a flooded- a flood of them in the springtime. To hear that we're already at 509 at this point of the year, we're potentially looking at about 1,000 by the end of the school year if we continue on, at this pace. So that, that's, I think, something that we need to, um, just ponder on and, and have the public recognize that we're having so many students return from charter schools already before it's even January. 509 students coming from charters to Buffalo Public Schools. Um, Dr. Cash, Dr. Williams, any last thoughts before we
Excuse me, I have one more thing. I'm sorry. Larry, on Friday,
Go ahead, Ms. Cotton.
On Friday, uh, at the New York State, um, at Big Five, uh, Shelley Mayer will be there. Um, and she, and we will have an opportunity to talk to her about charter schools. I think this is an issue that, uh, needs to be brought up with her. Uh, they're going to go over the charter school bills, and I just wanted to share that with the board that, uh, there will be, uh, the commissioner will be there as well as, uh, uh, Shelley Mayer, who, uh, is over, uh, deals with the Senate Education Committee. And that's something that charter schools are going to be talked about, and I think that's something that we need to share. And just wanted to say one other thing. When the community schools were presented to the board, the board was clear that there, that the neighborhood preference would not be put in place in any of the schools because of what we had just gone through with the Office of, uh, Office of, uh, Civil Rights. Um, and so there was a maximum of a 50 or a 60% neighborhood preference put in every school only. The rest were supposed to come from outside, and that's not happening. And I just want to make sure that I'm on record with that because I am serious about this. I am very serious about this because this is something that, that is a barrier that stops children from across the city getting access in the different buildings. So I just wanted to clear that up. The neighbor, that the community school piece had nothing to do, uh, or should never interfere with the neighborhood preference piece. They're not the same. Okay, thank you.
All right. Dr. Cash, Dr. Williams, any last thoughts?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, Scotty.
I was just going to say thank you. I know it's been a long night. Um, there's been a lot of good information shared, but thank you for hanging in there for this last presentation.
Uh, yes, colleagues, I have two comments first. Uh, this was a, a model night, in, in my view, of, of boardwork sessions, uh, a lot of them on one night. We don't often do that. Uh, and I'm certainly not saying we should do that all the time. But when we do do them, uh, the way we did them tonight, I thought was just exemplary. And I want to commend all of the chairs of the four committees, uh, the way you engaged your colleagues in the work, um, and the way you handled the, the discourse, I thought was excellent. So commending all of you, uh, for that. Uh, and so let's keep on that kind of a track, and, uh, and we'll, we'll do great, great things for this district for, for a long time. Now, I want to say, second and last, uh, this evening, is that when you do look at all of this work that we are, um, working hard to try to achieve, the, the superintendent goals, which I believe we, we're going to settle on now, and then vote on those next week, um, the idea of some longer-range goals that some of you brought up that are also important, uh, for us to keep in mind and drive toward. Uh, all of the good work tonight around MWBE, around making sure that our ESAR funds are managed and executed in a really, really, uh, stellar way that meet the needs of the community and meet your expectations. The excellent, excellent work of the vision of the gender schools, um, with the caveat that we want to inject all of those elements, uh, into, into all of our schools while we don't make one preference over another in terms of the work that has to be done to try to improve all of our schools. We, we look at it as a both-hand. We look at it as a both-hand. Uh, so we thank you for those observations. And then, of course, Dr. Williams' work, can't tell you enough about what she does on a daily basis to try to keep us safe, both students and staff colleagues. This is something that keeps us up all night, every night while we're in school. The numbers are high. The numbers are high. And, uh, COVID is very serious, and, um, we don't, we're not trying to politicize it. What, what Tanja does is say, we got to have masking, we got to have testing, and we got to have vaccines. That's, that's our strategy. And, uh, she's doing an excellent navigating through all of the different organizations and entities to try to help us do that. But all of the staff are working hard. Half of them are here tonight, and there's another group that aren't here, but that I will be bringing a resolution and a board item to you, to this board meeting. Um, as the first semester comes to an end, I look at the last 10 years, look back seven years, look forward three years. In that 10 years, um, we, we need to redesign and reconsider the compensation for our exempt employees. We've done some very good work with our other 10 bargaining units. Uh, they've all got new contracts. Some of them have gotten several new contracts in since, in, under my administration. But we need to now look at the, uh, exempt employees, the cabinet and the executive team, and then the other, uh, 16 or 17 exempt employees. Those are the ones I work with every day. And in order for me to do this work, I can't do it alone. You know that. Uh, this is the team that I rely on to get the work executed and into the deep tissue of our organization. So that proposal and that resolution will be on the board documents for this board meeting. I want you to examine that, uh, proposal closely. Uh, give me feedback, give me questions, uh, email me between now and next Wednesday. Plenty of opportunity in advance to, to review this, and, uh, and let's, um, take very thoughtfully and very considerately, uh, this proposal that I'm putting forth. It's a resolution, two and a half pages with four, uh, attachments and accompanying documents. And, uh, that will make, uh, make for a really, really, um, better compensation for our exempt employees. They're just, they're just fabulous. You see them all the time. You see their work, uh, but they have not been, uh, fairly looked at in, in, in just the nature of it for exempts. The other unions and CBAs have a specific, uh, agreement, and we're working again with them now. For example, our teachers, our administrators, but we need to take a, a good, hard look at our exempts at this time as we try to bring our system out of the pandemic and on into great, uh, outcomes, uh, using these ESAR funds. So I wanted to alert all of you while I had all of you, and you will see that, uh, tomorrow night uploaded, and then for your full consideration on Friday through, through Wednesday. So thank you for that, colleagues. That is my last word, and I turn it back to Larry and to Lou. And again, thank you for your full attention tonight. Great meetings tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Cash, and thank you, Dr. Williams, for your great, informative presentation tonight, and all staff that have remained on with us late. Uh, if there's any public still listening, just want to, uh, announce again that the application for student place, student placement application for 2022, 23 school year is live as we speak tonight, and it is due by Friday, February 11th. That is all from Educational Support. President Petrucci, anything?
Sorry, Larry, I should just set up here. It's, I think it's that time to adjourn, everyone. I don't see any objections in anyone's faces unless you want to mistake till midnight, we can get pizza. No?
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Stay safe.